All right, we will bring the City Council regular meeting agenda for Monday, September the 12th, 2022 at 6:30 PM to order. If you'll all join us as we rise and we'll have an invocation led by Councilmember Barry and our pledges to both flags by Councilmember Kate. All right, thank you very much for that. And we will be moving forward in our agenda, roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I will certify that we have a quorum present as all members of the council are present and accounted for. Before we move to citizens' comments, I have just a quick, want to make a personal privilege, if we will, had a grandson born just over two weeks ago on Saturday, the 27th. Jett Anderson Cole, he's our 11th grandchild, and just wanted to celebrate that with you guys as well. So a little bit has happened in the last couple of weeks. All right, with that, we will move to citizens' comments. And when we do, we've got a couple of comments from people that just want to make general comments. And then we have several people that have turned papers in that want to speak specifically to an item in our agenda. And we'll do the general comments now, but when we get to your item in the agenda, we will call you up to address the council on your specific item. So with that, Mayor Protem, proceed. Thank you, Mayor. First up is Roberto Perez. If you would go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. And welcome. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you. My name is Robert Perez. I live at 4906 Elm Street here in Pearland. And I am a retired soldier. And more specifically, I am a 12-year veteran of the Combat Engineer Corps. I want to place an official concern about concrete that's being poured in the Willowcrest subdivision. I believe it's Bond 17. And I kind of claim it as a substandard concrete due to the fact that within a 57-foot span of my roadway, directly in front of my house, I've got approximately seven to eight perpendicular cracks from end to end on one side of the road. The other side of the road is okay for now. And that's to be seen. Until they clean the road, I won't be able to look at that. A little more specifically, I also checked theater, which was the first road that was poured. And on one side of the road, which is half the road, I found 25 cracks perpendicular from end to end. Is the reason why I classified the concrete as substandard. In conclusion, I'd like to say thank you for the upgrade. I am a resident since 1985, and I want to place this concern officially. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We can't dialogue on a issue like this, but staff, can we do a good follow-up, get out there, make sure our inspectors are taking a look at that, but also follow up with the resident as well with some contact information? That'd be great. Any other general comments? All right, thank you. So that's all the general. Other comments that have been requested, we'll get to you under a specific item. And I know there's a few people that may want to address this in a public hearing. We'll have public hearings here in just a second. So moving forward, we will open our public hearing number one. This is a public hearing request by Anthony Spriggins, applicant and owner for the approval of his own change for approximately 5.3499 acres of land from General Business GB District to single-family residential R4 district. And with that, Martin and staff, you'll take away.
Thank you, Mayor. So as mentioned, this is a request to change 5.34 acres of land from General Business to the R4 district. This is the aerial and zoning map of the property showing its location on Hatfield Road. You can see from the aerial that it's surrounded by a lot of single-family residences, some mobile homes, and some detention ponds and detention ways around the property. This is a view of the subject property. And the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted their public hearing on August 15th. At that hearing, they unanimously approved the motion to approve by a vote of five to zero. With that, Mayor, I'll pass back to you.
Thank you for that. Is the applicant present? Okay, do you have a presentation, or are you just here to answer any questions? Perfect. If we have questions, we may come to you. Thank you very much. So with that, we will move to the allowing the public to say whether they're in favor or against this proposed request. If you have a comment, you can go to the podium, give three minutes, give your name and address, and give us your comments. Second request for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing none, we will move forward in our agenda to City Council for any questions, comments, concerns that you may have. So open it up. Mr. Owens?
On this one here, why it was want to go to residential R4. It's the smallest slots we have. It's R4, and I was just wondering any particular reason?
I guess, Martin, what's the future land use plan for this one?
So we have R4 surrounding the property on three sides, which is one of the reasons why R4 was recommended.
Is there a reason, a reason for it to change it to R4?
The surrounding property to the north, to the east, and to the south are all in R4 zoned classification.
Okay, all right, just a question.
So it's basically fitting in with what's immediately around it? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing, and we'll move to new business item number one. Member Coza, would you present that, please?
Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000M-233, so moved.
We have a motion, a second. We've had staff report with that. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, with that, we'll move to the public hearing number two. Martin, if you would, read the public hearing reason and move into your staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a request by Samir Guliani and Karim Pirani, applicant on behalf of Frick Incorporated, owner for approval of a zone change from General Business GB District to Town Home TH District on four lots, or four tracts of land totaling approximately 5.72 acres. General location is northeast and southeast corners of McLean Road and Springfield Avenue, and the northwest and southwest corners of Veterans Drive and Springfield Avenue. So as stated, this is a zone change request for four separate tracts of land. You can see here on the aerial and zoning map that the General Business is kind of an outlier in this area, is surrounded on all sides by either detention or single-family residences. And here are some proper, here are some views of the property at the corner of Veterans and Springfield. And then views of the corners at McLean and Springfield. So the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted their public hearing on this case at their August 15th meeting. The commission generally discussed the uses allowed in the General Business District, other residential types of development, drainage, floodplain fill mitigation, and the desire to have increased housing choices within Pearland. After discussion, a motion was made to approve the zone change request from General Business to Town Home, and the vote was four to one, recommending approval to City Council. With that, I'll pass back to you.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? All right, do you have a presentation, or are you just here to answer questions? You do? Okay, it's your opportunity to go to the podium. If you've got any visuals, we can probably plug it in as well. So welcome to, welcome to City Hall. We look forward to it. While we're waiting for that to get loaded up, just a point of information, our next item is to actually welcome in some presentations to our Little League team. We did it in the middle of our agenda because a lot of these boys are home, and they're getting into football season and those types of things. And so they weren't available to be here right at 6:30. So they're going to be here around 7:30. So if we move beyond that, then we'll cut kind of in the middle, and we'll recognize them. And we've got some proclamations for them. We did this back out at, at the park here a couple of weeks ago, but we haven't had them formally into City Hall with pictures here with the council and those kinds of things. And we just want to celebrate them a little bit more. So that's why you see that on your agenda. We didn't want to do it before or after, actually have to suspend the, the meeting and the process. So we'll, we'll take that break when they're here. All right, looks like we got it going.
Good evening, City Council, residents of Pearland. My name is Samir Gulamani. Address, 1318 Miners Bend Lane, Richmond, Texas. So as you all see, all the, this is the aerial image of the four proposed tracts of land that are currently zoned General Business. And we're proposing to change to Town Home zoning. The surrounding area is all single-family homes, so it doesn't make sense that it, for these to be General Business. We did look into developing it as shopping center, car wash, but I don't think it'd be fair to the residents to have a shopping center in their backyard, especially with the noise, the light, the traffic. So Town Home just makes more sense. Here's the preliminary site plan that we're developing. They're preliminary. So first one is the site plan. Second is a diagram showing the individual units. I know some people had concerns about traffic, how the residents would access their units. It would actually be with two driveways, and they enter their home through the back, so that it wouldn't cause traffic, literally nothing. And we're in communication with the city and county, city and county in regards to drainage. I know drainage is a, is a, the biggest factor for the residents. So we want to take care of the drainage, following all the rules and regulations. So our civil engineer is doing the calculations for different options for drainage. Landscaping, as you could see, we have a lot of green area, because we would like a lot of, to incorporate a lot of landscaping, trees, shrubs, more than the actual requirements, just to make it more aesthetically pleasing. Here's some elevations of how we expect the final project to turn out. We have a sixplex unit, which you see here in the, in the site plan. And this is the, the back elevation where the residents would enter through their garage in the back. The front elevation also is going to be something aesthetically nice looking. Side elevation, the two sides. We're experimenting with different materials. And another concern I think residents would have is the height restriction, because you wouldn't want someone looking down into your backyard. So the height, we're going to keep it relatively low, about the same height as the adjacent homes. So, so for privacy for the neighbors. Here's the floor plans that we're thinking roughly about 1,400 square feet. And a rendering of how we expect the project to turn out, something, I know the city of Pearland is looking for alternative options rather than the single-family. So that's what we're trying to provide. And we're working with the city, the county, the Westwood Village HOA, and the residents to develop a beautiful and safe project as an addition to the city. And that is all. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for that. We may come back to if we have some questions here in just a minute. But we will move forward in our agenda to those wishing to speak for or against, excuse me, for or against this proposed zone change. Go to the podium, give you your name and address, and you have three minutes for the, for the record. Not sure if they're heading that way or not. Second request for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. All right, with that, we'll move to City Council for questions, comments, concerns from you guys. Anybody have anything? Member Cam Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. John, has the, has this zone change created any problems? Are they going to have to get a CUP or anything? Are they going to be able to easily go and do this Town Home in this area, assuming this?
Yes, assuming their, their submitted plans meet the zoning requirements for the townhouse zoning district, it would be a by right development.
Somebody who's land development professional, don't do any work in the city, haven't, won't be doing it, I would just highly recommend you go and talk with all these neighbors, because when people get used to seeing a green area in front of their house for 20, 20 or 30 years, and it's no longer green, it starts to feel like that's my park. And it may not be their park anymore. So I might, maybe you get the zone changed, and you have that discussion, but it'll probably save you some grief on the front end. It's just, I've seen too many of these reserves and projects previously worked on, and they come, and then there's a lot of hooting and hollering and brain damage. And people just need to get acclimated to that. So I just word to the wise. But I'll be supportive.
Member Coza?
John, or Robert, if you're here. As far as the drainage, I know the citizens at P&amp;Z were highly concerned with drainage. So as far as how this is proposed, what type of impact would be taken away, or what's required to cover any kind of drainage? Because I know in the area, there's a lot of drainage issues as far as problems with the?
So today's request is about the zoning. So their drain, when they submit their actual building plans inside for the site development, that's when drainage will be calculated and looked at. So based on whatever lot coverage they plan, they will have to meet the required drainage for that. And, and that would be, need to be addressed before any permits are issued.
So as far as what they're showing us here, it could be less?
It could be less, could be more. You know, it'll, it'll, once, we haven't seen the calculations, because no, no project has been submitted yet.
All right, thank you. Member Carbone? To follow along with that, when, when the neighboring subdivision was developed, we were under not Atlas 14, whatever standards were. And when they have to develop, I know they said the height is going to be comparable to the? to the, to the neighboring homes. Are we going to require them to come put four or five foot of fill in there? And I forget that we'll look at drainage later, but if I was a resident, that'd, that'd be a concern and we'll hear about it.
Yeah. Yes, I'm here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, we, the developer has been in contact with engineering department and we talked in the past and we will continue to talk about the fill material. Because the site is located in 500-year floodplain and whatever the material that they bring to build this up, that needs to be mitigated on-site. And based on the size, size of the site, it is really hard to mitigate the fill within the site. So our recommendation is always, okay, do it in pier and beam so that fill mitigation can be avoided. Because without that, it's hard to provide fill mitigation within the site. So that is the recommendation. And we haven't seen the real design, how they are going to provide detention, stormwater detention yet, but there are several different options they can come up with to mitigate stormwater detention.
I've, I've never seen a six-plex up on pier and beam, but that'll be interesting. I guess generally speaking, there, there, once it goes into engineering to look at drainage, there can be no additional flows onto the neighbors. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. If we look at the current drainage plan, the subdivision drains directly to the detention pond or the linear detention owned and maintained by DDD 4 to the south. So all those inside streets flows directly into this storm, drainage system south of the subdivision. And the lots that is fronting Veterans Drive and McLean Road need to drain to Veterans Drive or McLean Drive or to the detention pond directly south based on the mitigation requirement that they need to provide. So they won't be draining any flow into the subdivision drainage system.
And last question, is there any buffering requirements since this is residential to residential?
There's no additional buffering that's required.
But there are, there are additional green space requirements for townhomes, so they do have to have additional open space based on the number of units they have. So that does lend itself to helping to mitigate some of the density of the project.
All right. Thank you. Member Kamkar?
Yeah, Raj, I guess, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole very far. They, they, they're not going to go into the residential system. All these reserves front on roads that the city maintains. We're not going to let them do any enhanced flows. So yeah, they're going to do paint on-site in theory.
That, that is correct. It is not going to drain into the residential subdivision, inside subdivision. If I checked the elevation, because if we look at the elevation and draw a profile across, what you see is both Veterans Road and McLean Road is around 49 feet elevation and lowest elevation in the subdivision is about 46. So it is hard to drain that. It, it doesn't make sense to drain to our internal system where it is already a kind of ball. So we need to drain it towards the, towards the ditch system following McLean and Veterans Drive.
And are the, Martin and John, these people are going to be able to front along Veterans and McLean, their driveways, or are they going to have to do a rear load?
They're most likely going to do a rear load. I believe what the applicant showed had a...
Fronting.
Had an alley on the back and they were fronting on the main roads.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're just looking at the zoning on here, without getting too deep into the weeds, one of the comments from the residents at the P&amp;Z meeting said they were in favor in the discussion, talked about their desire to limit the intensity of development from the currently allowed commercial use to residential. So from staff's perspective, do we think that the current zoning would have a greater impact than moving over to residential as far as all the things we've been discussing up here? Just from a zoning perspective, is one better than the other?
So from a zoning perspective, commercial is of course going to have a greater potential for intensity of allowed uses. Moving this to a residential classification removes a vast majority of any commercial opportunity. Of course, someone can still do a home occupation or something of that nature, but even then the intensity is severely reduced, so.
And I guess from the way that maybe you're looking at intensity, when I'm thinking of commercial, I think of, you know, more parking lots and just more kind of an impervious cover. Do you think that that's more so going to be found in the, you know, business, commercial type developments versus the residential? From a, we've been talking about flooding up here.
So in either case, whether it is developed as commercial or whether it is developed as residential, the total impervious coverage has to be calculated for and either maintained, detained, retained, one of those ways. And engineering has to approve that prior to any approval of building permits.
So then just looking at this, I'll just stop it there so I don't get too far into the weeds. So Mayor, I guess, looking at this from an intensity, like I said, that, that comment was, I think, very astute from the residents that attended that P&amp;Z meeting. And I'd be in favor of the zone change to go along with that same line of thought of limiting the intensity of development.
Any other questions, comments? Member Barry?
The only thing I'd say, Mayor, is, you know, given the comments regarding the pier and beam construction and the fact that the roof lines are going to be consistent with the current, the current housing, it would be tough. But at the end of the day, I don't necessarily see a problem with the zone change in and of itself. We're still going to have the same issues, right? We're going to have, whether it's residential or general business, we're still going to have impervious cover. We're going to deal with all the drainage issues. We're going to have detention. There's, there are a lot of hurdles to overcome here. So as far as a zone change, I think that's the, the least, the, the least of their issues at this point.
Any other questions, comments? Member?
Raj, these people on this application, are they now, have we hit that threshold where now their, their post Atlas 14 versus pre?
Yeah, it will be post Atlas 14. They will have to do everything based on Atlas 14 rainfall.
Great. Thank you.
Just a couple of things because pictures mean something. And I know pictures can be put up here. We do a zone change and it can be, then be anything that you guys want to do in, within the townhome criteria. Couple of things, John and Martin, I see the six units together. Something tells me the max they can do is four. Can they do six units together? Out of the UDC?
I believe four is the max, but I know Martin's checking right now.
So again...
Whatever, again, whatever they, they, they submit, we will review against.
Right. I'm just trying to set expectation level because the picture is shown to us and then there's a, there's a, something else expected, which we're also getting to on some of the drainage criteria and whatnot. And then secondly, I saw what looked to be in the pictures, single garage versus a double garage. And is that allowed in townhomes? I thought, I know single-family minimums two. Eons ago, you could do a single, but I see, I see two in these pictures. So again, I want to set an expectation level of...
Right. So minimum parking for a townhome is two. And just to confirm your prior question, it's three as a minimum attached, up to six.
Up to six. Okay. All right. I just want to, again, I want to set an expectation level for you guys that you know kind of where you're headed with that. Member Kay?
Just wanted to ask, if, if they're on a pier and beam foundation and two-story, how are the roofs going to be level with the homes behind them?
Concept of pier and beam doesn't mean that it will be elevated really high. When we allow pier and beam, the base floor elevation has to be 1.5 feet above 100-year floodplain, whereas if it is slab on grade, it is one foot above the 100-year floodplain. That's the difference between slab on grade and pier and beam. And that's a recommendation. It's not like we force the developer to use pier and beam. It just helps to avoid the land, avoid the use of land for detention and mitigation. That is the concept.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. And then just to the applicants, a couple of questions. Do you have a builder lineup? Are you the builder or do you have a? Not yet? Okay. Are you planning to, to, to have this for sale or a rent product? Just wanted to put that on the record, that we're looking for a for-sale product here. And I know representatives in the HOA are here tonight. Obviously, you didn't speak in favor or against. I'm assuming HOA itself is not necessarily against this proposal. I think you're looking for the best, best fit next door to you versus the worst fit. So I don't know if you want to address that or not. Go to the podium. Sorry.
While he's walking up there, Mayor, I just want to say, I really like your shirt, ma'am.
Okay. I'm a resident on McLean, off of McLean, I'm on Ivywood Drive. So I will abut up to this property if it's built out. So I'm here tonight as a citizen, but I'm also the president of the HOA, Westwood Village, but I'm speaking on behalf of a citizen. On behalf of, as a, as a citizen, I want it to, I want the zoning to be changed from whatever it is right now, which is light business, I believe, general business. I would prefer to have it changed to residential. Now, however we go down that road, after that zoning change is done and all the mitigation that has to take place and the drainage and everything else that has to be looked at, that will be done under a residential thing for my preference. So I, I represent the homeowners there and I know that Ashwood and Beachwood flood tremendously during every flood event that we have. So we want to mitigate that. And I like what you were saying earlier, and I've, I've already been in contact with your office, so I know the response that I got back from was very acceptable. It has to be mitigated, it has to drain to BDD 4 that's south of the subdivision. So yeah, that's, that's, that's my take on it as a, as a resident, but also as the HOA president representing those residents, that it, that they need to be protected on Ashwood and Beachwood.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Sir, if we could get your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, Greg. I knew it. Sorry.
Sorry about that. 3910 Ivywood Drive. Oh, Greg Hawkins.
There you go. All right. Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, we will call this public hearing number two to a close. With that, we'll move to new business item number two. Member Kamkar, would you place that on the table, please?
Yes, sir. New business item, consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000 M dash 232, so moved.
We have a motion, a second. We've had staff report, questions, comments from council. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Kay?
No.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Kozak?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Like I said, moving forward in our agenda, again, when our little league folks show up, we'll kind of take a break and do a quick presentation with them. So moving on to the consent agenda, Member Carbone, Mayor Protim Carbone, would you present that? Real quick, I haven't heard of anyone pulling an item presented to me. So anybody looking to approve? So it's A through what?
Aye.
Consideration, possible action, approval of consent agenda items, A through I, so moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Kay?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Kozak?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. With that, we'll move to new business continued, number three. Member Hernandez, would you present that, please?
Gladly. Mayor, consideration, possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 2000 M dash 231, so moved.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Mayor Council, this is a second reading. There was the public hearing and the first reading held earlier. It's up on Hooper Drive and a rezone from existing spectrum to a planned development district. So, go for the report.
All right. Yeah, I think it's on, it's off consent because we have, I think we had a no vote on it. So questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Kozak?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. With that, Member Kay, would you present item four, please?
Consideration, possible action, resolution number R 2022-196, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report?
I'm sorry, sir. I think the applicants are out in the lobby, but council had discussed this request from the board of PMMD2 earlier and rejected that, but they have come back and are asking council consideration for a revised proposal. It's really the applicants or the boards request the council, it's required upon the council to approve such a move. And so this revision is back before you, but really we leave it up to them to, you know, state their comments and so forth to you. Darren's trying to find them.
I'm trying to figure out. I thought we were going to have board members. Is any board members from the PMMD2 present?
Their attorney was here, I saw.
I don't think so. Well, throw it out to questions, comments, concerns from council. Member Kozak?
I know. I don't know where they went.
They were here, so.
Yeah.
Take a motion to...
Table it?
Table it.
Till later in the meeting?
Yeah.
So moved.
We have a motion to table.
Second.
Second. This will be to table until later in the agenda. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kozak?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez? Member Kay?
No.
No.
Member Barry? Member Owens?
No.
All right. We're on item number four. I think we have some questions and asked if the management district folks were here. You guys had stepped out. So we were about to table you to put you towards the end of the meeting. So we, we motioned to, motioned to table that failed. So we're back on with the main motion. I was getting into staff report and you guys had, had stepped out. So if you would give your name and address for the record, I know you guys have a proposal for the council from the management district. So if you would identify yourselves and tell us what you got.
Good evening. My name is JoBeth Prohoska. I'm the president of Pearland Municipal Management District number two. And I work for Weitzman, who is the developer owner of The Crossing at 288, which is the power center with Best Buy, Old Navy, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. And we understand from our last meeting that, you know, we heard your feedback from the last meeting about the tracts that we were looking to deannex and went back as a board and reviewed the feedback. And we have come back with a counterproposal, which is to deannex and exclude two small... to deannex and exclude two small residential homesteads that are within our district. As you know, Pearland Municipal Management District number two, the purpose of our board is to levy a tax to maintain the $24 million of improvements that are underway right now that the city has funded. So, starting at Bellway 8 and 288, all the way south to County Road 59, that whole corridor of 288 is being beautified by landscaping, pavers, lighting, fountains. There are some giant pear sculptures that you'll see going up on the freeway, and the city funded those improvements. Our job is to maintain those improvements. With residential homesteads in our district, we are not able to maintain a tax rate to do what we need to do to maintain the improvements. So we are looking to exclude those two homesteads and have the opportunity to maintain our current tax rate as opposed to dropping it a half point every year, which is what we would be forced to do at that point.
With that, I guess we'll throw it open to questions, comments from council. Member Coza?
Yes. I had attended that meeting as well as Member Barry, and at that, we had some discussions about the option that you put in with our agenda here. I don't know if y'all can pull it up, it had option one on it. And then you also had an option two. And at that time, option one, if I remember correctly, was not doing anything, leaving alone, and basically for, I don't know, seven to 10 years to be able to just precipitously go down. And at our council meeting last time, we didn't say we were going to let it sit for seven to 10 years. We said, let's look at it a year from now, maybe two years from now, to see if there's any movement on the development of that property. And so, one, the concern was, you're coming right back. I understand y'all don't want to dip down, but to my recollection, option two in that meeting showed that y'all were going to get to a point where the amount, if you're maxed on the rate that you can do, you're still going to be woefully under the further it goes. How, how do you plan, you know, what are you looking at? What services are you going to cut as far as when you do get to that point? Because if I remember correctly, it was about a year to two years after where this being left alone runs out, you'd be in the same boat anyway.
Just so I am sure I understand your question, you're asking that if we do go ahead and exclude the homestead, if financially we will be looking at a deficit anyway?
Yes, that's what the two options that you had. Of course, the one just precipitously going a half point over the years.
And that creates a deficit very quickly.
Yes.
And sure, the alternative does not necessarily account for the growth in value that we, we've been very conservative on our growth projections. So while property owners may hope that appraisal districts do not bump values as they realistically will, you know, that's what we're looking at, is we're not putting in huge bumps on the values. Additionally, there's still land in the district that can be developed and that is inside the district, and some of the land is under contract now that's working on development. So we feel confident that with the growth in this area, that we are going to have additional businesses come into the district, create value, and pay the levy as well.
Right, which I understand that, but I mean, what I was saying is the option two that wasn't included in our agenda packet showed that you, basically, if I remember correctly, it was about two years apart that you ended up with a deficit at that point. Barry, Councilman Barry is.
So if you, I guess.
In the meeting that you attended, okay.
The question in a different way is, is if we were to go and exclude these two properties, how many years does that buy you from the current situation? Because currently, right now, your presentation shows that in 2028, you'll be running into a deficit at that point, so you're at six years. And if I recall in the previous presentation, and I'm sorry that the public doesn't actually get to see that, but actually in 3031 was when you were going to start to show a deficit regardless of whether or not, if the two properties were taken out. So I guess, I guess what Member Coza is trying to get to is, what measures are you taking now to preclude the inevitable regardless of whether or not these residences are there or not? Because it only buys you a couple of years.
Well, sure. So at that point in time, we have the flexibility to raise our tax rate up to 10 cents. So 10 cents is the max tax rate we can assess, but we would be able to raise our tax rate if it was absolutely necessary to continue providing the services.
Well, and unfortunately, the last presentation didn't show, but the presentation we saw in your meeting showed that you did exclude the residential properties and that you did increase the tax rate to 10 cents, but yet you still showed a deficit two years later beyond what this presentation is showing now. So that's, that's the concern. So long term, regardless of whether or not you exclude these residential properties or not, it was showing that the business district was going to be in a deficit anyway. So my question is to you is, one, what are you doing to prevent that? And two, you're showing an increase in maintenance and operations associated with those over the long period and upwards towards $1.4 million a year. So I'm assuming you're making an assumption on the maintenance cost associated with that, right?
Sure, we are. We actually have gone out to bid and received some feedback on our bids. So we, we do know that our costs that we went out with and we're assuming is in line with what we expected. So the assessed value in 20, I'm sorry, in 31 to 32, we're assuming an assessed value that will grow beyond what our very conservative projections are showing. So, yeah, with a full tax rate. So that's added 10 cent tax, but the values are not being, the assessed values are not being pushed up.
I think part of the, part of the problem is, we don't have this option two down here.
It was at the meeting, that's what I'm saying. It was a little disappointing not having that in here, because it showed where it ran out. If I remember correctly, it was one to two years.
So I think ultimately, I would still be in the same position. Let's review it in a year or two. We have some better maintenance data associated with what that's going to look like. It'll give us a couple of years to build that out. I mean, that's just kind of where I am, to get a better grip on the actual bank that's associated with that.
When the improvements are new, you don't have the repairs that you will in, you know, you're, you're under warranty, everything's nice, shiny and new. You don't have necessarily the repairs that you're going to see in years three, four, five, six, and onward, because everything, you know, is still operational.
And to that point, down Highway 35 on the west side, we put lights up and within short order, they were out, and they've been out ever since. So it can happen.
The other thing, I think we just, I'm sorry.
Member Kim Carr?
I'd just like to understand, like, pull this back a little bit. So what's being asked today and what was being asked at the time? Because I feel like we're going real afar field on like taxes and expenses, and there's a whole board that manages that, and I don't want to manage that. So can somebody just explain, what is a request today that we're supposed to vote on?
We have two residents that live in our district. Our district was really formed to be an all-commercial district of the businesses up and down 288, not for residents to pay for pavers under an overpass and trees on the, you know, trees on the feeder road. We want to exclude two homesteads that have residents that live there that have homestead exemptions. The reason we want.
You want citizens to not pay taxes?
They're paying about $60 a year.
Because I'm okay with citizens not paying taxes. I'm generally okay with that.
So, so each of these parties is paying, I think one pays $73 or $4, the other one's $60, because our tax rate's low.
Now, the request, one of the members of the audience, they wanted to have this commercial corner, was initially asked to be included, and that commercial corner is now staying in the district. Is that correct?
So in a nutshell, parcel one that's on your, on your screen there, used to include all the way out to the, to the feeder and back around, they're excluding only what would be the homestead.
Okay.
Right.
I have a question. There's maybe two or three meetings ago, Mayor, where we had the user that wants to do the multifamily, they were doing the assemblage, and it was more or less in the district. How, I can't worry about the future too far, but knowing that they will probably come back, their assemblage is now moving.
Block above number two.
It's a block above number two. How does that intersect with the notice provisions and all of those items? They're not a homestead, but people live there. How do those provisions affect your truth and taxation notices and?
So those would become part of our district and help build our assessed value, so that they would pay tax to the district.
Nobody's asking for an exclusion, and it's probably not anticipated that one will be offered.
Correct.
The reason I say that is, I kind of hear where my fellow members are, and they kind of don't want to deal with this. I kind of feel like we probably just need to dispense with it. If a homeowner doesn't want to pay tax, and we can exclude them from doing that, I'm actually good with that. I'm, I'm on the side of the homeowner, because we're already taxing the hell out of these people anyway. So, so if we can go and make an argument to pull them out of this one district, and they're okay with that, and the district's okay with that, that sounds like a good idea. The, the item around the commercial corner that we know will be valuable, we've acceded to that. We're keeping that in the district, probably needs to be in the district. The other guy who's coming in, the multifamily person above number two, is going to be adding value there, and if they know that they're part of this district and they're signing on for that, so be it. But I don't see why we should push this down. We have a, a year from now, somebody's going to pay taxes on Gen 1. I'd rather not have people who live there have to go pay that if they're not gaining the benefit of those taxes. That's just my position. I think we should just deal with this, let's dispense with it, move on with the business.
Member Barry, you had a follow-up. I cut you off. I wanted to get.
No, I was just going to clarify, I was just going to restate my previous. You know, in the event that, and this isn't, I'm assuming this is why you excluded the homesteads this time, was because the remaining part of the parcels are going to continue to be in the business district.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, Darren, in regards to these two pieces right here, as far as homesteads, say at some point they do sell to a commercial entity or, you know, something that does turn commercial, would that be brought back in, or would that be excluded within the district?
I'll leave that up to, that would be ultimately up to the district to try to get that in, but I think it would be difficult to bring it in later.
And as far as the homeowners, I haven't heard or seen any issues with the taxes that they pay. Are they here tonight?
No, sir. The, the bottom line is that the city of Pearland is spending $24 million on this corridor of city money. The only reason we have a management district is to maintain the improvements that you are paying for. We want to have the flexibility to hold our tax rate steady, so we can pay for those improvements to be maintained at the highest, you know, the highest quality. I mean, it's $24 million of the city's money. We'd like to hold the tax rate flat. We'd like, or our max is 10 cents. So, you know, this is not a big part of the tax bill. By getting these two homesteads out of the district, we can hold our tax rate flat. If we keep homesteads in the district because of truth and taxation, we will have to drop our tax rate a half point every year. That's substantial. If we have to do that, this, you know, our district really does not necessarily have a purpose, and we're going to have to look elsewhere, primarily to the city, to, you know, figure out who's going to pay for the maintenance. Right now, our maintenance is over a million dollars a year.
Do you have any numbers on the properties that are currently developed, and how many properties that fight their taxes each year?
That protest informally?
Yes.
Or litigate? I do not.
Any other questions, comments? I don't, don't see anybody ready to vote on this. Madam Secretary, we'll call for a vote.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
No.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Coza?
No.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kim Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion fails three to four.
Yeah, I think the same thing holds true. Let's, let's have this discussion in a year. Let's get the project finished. Let's start the maintenance. Let's have a conversation in a year. I think that's what we asked for at the last, the last time this was brought up. So let's, let's continue that dialogue. Certainly, we want it maintained, just trying to figure out the right time to make sure that we get it right. Okay? Thank y'all. Good deal. Checking to see how many of our little league guys are out there. If you, if you guys wouldn't mind, let's take just a five-minute break, a recess, and we'll come right back. If you, if you guys wouldn't mind, let's take just a five minute break, a recess, and we'll come right back. It's an exciting day. If you've been on a rock in the last month, you didn't know anything about this, but I think everybody in Pearland knew what was going on with our youngsters. They did such a great job. They were incredible ambassadors. I've had the opportunity to be several games with you guys, all the way from state to regionals and even to Williamsport. And I just want to tell everybody, I can't be more proud as a mayor to have these young men and their coaches representing our city. They did an incredible job of being an ambassador. Pearland is on the map because of their good work. But more importantly, their sportsmanship, their effort, their grit, the way they just handled themselves throughout. Same goes with, with a lot of the other teams that were there. You guys did a great job. We had the opportunity to recognize them out here at the park here a couple of weeks ago, but I wanted the opportunity to bring you guys into City Hall. You guys have done such a great job. I wanted to make sure that this was captured in our minutes forevermore. Additionally, we have the proclamation that I read that evening. I've got a proclamation for each one of you as well as the coaches. That way you can keep this forever. And your, I mean, your names are on this. This is a big deal and you guys will have this for the rest of your life. And I want to make sure that you had that, but also just wanted to spend just a little bit of time with you again. I'm going to read this proclamation for everyone to, just so you can hear it and understand how important this was. And no, I didn't change the names to your nicknames. I'm sorry. I threatened to. I thought, well, that'd be kind of cool. We may make one up and just have for posterity's sake. But whereas the Pearland Little League, Little League representing District 15 are the 2022 Texas East State Champions and the 2022 Southwest Regional Champions. And whereas the Pearland Little League beat a team from Tulsa, Oklahoma on Tuesday, August the 9th, in the Southwest Regional Championship in Waco, Texas, sending them to the 2022 Little League World Series in Williamsport, Pennsylvania. And whereas the Little League Baseball World Series began on August the 17th, 2022, Pearland Little League played a total of five games with three wins against Davenport, Holidaysburg, whom they played twice. Pearland Little League All-Stars have previously been to the Little League World Series in 2010, 2014, and 2015. Whereas the following 12-year-old Little League, Pearland Little League All-Stars, along with manager Aaron Cummings, coaches Rob Zurich and Andrew Solomon, who we've got here tonight, have shown remarkable determination, skill, and good sportsmanship throughout the season and Little League World Series and have earned the respect of one and all. Their names, Jake Zurich, Caden Shelton, Ethan Richardson, Corey Khan, Ford Hill, Landon Carroll, Manuel Castillo, Malachi Clark, Cooper Arbaw, Jackson Wolfe, Cohen Hartman, Jacoby Mayberry, and Austin Cummings. And I've had the opportunity to say those names a few times and it's a joy every time I do. Whereas the Pearland Little League athletes have exhibited incredible resilience, grit, and passion throughout the season and in their quest to the Little League World Series, finishing third in the United States of America and fifth overall in the world, which is an incredible achievement. Now therefore, Kevin Cole, I, Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me, is the mayor of the city of Pearland, to hereby proclaim Thursday, September the 1st, as 2022, as Pearland Little League Day. And with that, Coach Solomon, would you like to say just a couple of words?
I wasn't planning to, but. So the one thing that I'll say, and I'll keep it real short, is one of the things that I think meant a lot to the whole team was the support that we had from the Pearland community and then going outward from there, the Houston community and the Texas community. I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to put in words the appreciation. And I know the parents appreciate it probably more than anyone. Not just sort of the moral support, but we got a lot of financial support from a lot of people throughout Houston, from Mattress Mac to Ronnie Killen, to the Ashra organization, you know, like big time donations that helped with expenses. Because to be quite honest, it's, it's expensive to travel with a team of 13, their parents, their siblings, to Tyler, to Waco, and then, and then obviously to Williamsport. So the, the support that they received, I mean, a video message from Governor Abbott. You were at, you know, games in Tyler, in Waco, and, and in Williamsport. And that support, I mean, I think shows a lot to the boys and it's just really appreciated.
Well, good. Absolutely. We want to get a picture. Actually, I want a picture with all the councils. So if y'all would come down here, I want to get the council in this picture. Hey, guys, move on over here. We want to get all of our, should we put them behind, the council behind and? Wait, wait, wait. Up on the dots. Yeah. 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 Chaos. Sorry. All right. I'm going to hold this up.
All right.
Y'all ready?
All right.
All right. With that, like I said, I have one for each one of you. Coach, if you could help us get the rest of them to the guys that aren't here, that'd be, that'd be phenomenal. I've got one for each one of you guys as well. I'm assuming the one that we did at the park actually went to the league, so they could keep it. So if Aaron took that, let's just make sure that the league has one as well.
Okay. And the boys actually have pens for each of the councilmen, not for you, Mayor.
I got one. Tell you what, we would always take a break for stuff like that. That is incredible stuff. These young men did an incredible job for us and wanted to take a few minutes to celebrate them. So I appreciate y'all indulging us for just a few minutes to make that happen. It's always special to spend some time with them. So with that, we're going to move forward in our agenda. That was actually, we had suspended item number three until they got here. So we'll be moving on to item number five. And Member Barry, would you present that? We do have a couple of comments from people. We'll get to that here in just a minute.
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you. Consideration of possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1619. So moved?
We have a motion and a second. Clay, how long is your staff report?
Not real long because there's, we've covered most of it. I was just going to go over some of the new slides and so maybe six, seven minutes.
Okay, so we'll do staff report and then we'll go to citizens who have signed up.
Put the presentation up, please. So Mayor, as I mentioned, I'd like to just, the material here is mainly for reference. It's a culmination of presentations that you've had. Just told on there. So, but I would like to introduce and that first slide that shows the council goals and strategies, how those align with the initiatives that you've adopted. And then this budget is to further the whole project and all of these. So we should be able to tie the council goals to the initiatives that we're going to see. Next one, please. So again, council, we're, we're shaping our future with purpose and we're committed to the public safety, our employees, and building our future together. We are cohesive in terms of our staff and leadership, meeting these priorities. And I believe that these 23 budget package boosts these investments in the high priority areas and taking care of our staff, people that are at the front and center of delivering these results. Next. So this is the consensus of our earlier discussions and we can refer back to this as needed. If you go to slide 15, please. So as I said, the rest of these slides you've seen, but did want to highlight some of the changes from the discussions and the dialogue with council. There was consensus for building up the new sick buyback benefit that we offer to employees, increasing that allowance from 40 to 60 hours. And you can see the cost increases there. Next, please. And then drainage, obviously a major import. We're, we're supporting that as council directed earlier in the year with more than doubling the regular maintenance. But we also have funding with the master drainage plan from the general fund for one-third. PDC has amended their budget and they've got one-third. And then we'll be approaching the Missouri County Drainage District as we did the first plan for the last third. And so we are very committed to the drainage priority. And this is just one example of that. Next, please. Council also did provide a consensus when we brought up reducing the debt service rate as pertains to the property taxes by a half cent. That will lower the projected fund balance and the net positive by half, but still in good shape, provides a little buffer in that fund. So that does have impact with the general fund with the formula on the TERS administrative fees. And so to compensate for that, as requested, we reduced the transfer out to infrastructure reinvestment fund. Next. And this is something new, just want to flag a relatively small amount in the scheme of things, but our police department has decided and they're going to be bringing in some, the polygraph services, all the employees there, they have to have a polygraph before they're hired on, just to moving that from a contracted to in-house. But there's significant training course for that. And I believe that'll be a longer term benefit for us, both in terms of operations and cost. Then if we go to 32. So their new thing, and we've been talking to Frontier to get the documentation that's required for this, but this is a contractual change. They are allowed, there's a special CPI that's specific to garbage and trash, apparently. And that's 5.4%. So they provide the documentation and the fee schedule, you'll see recognizes this and it shows about a dollar change for next year in the garbage pickup for residential. And then 61. So just to cap, you know, there's a lot of slides here, but this material the council's gone over for months. And this recounts the prior meetings, going back to the council input session, CIP adoption, et cetera, et cetera. Tonight, we have the first reading and the fee schedule on the 26th. We'll require to have another public hearing formally and we'll have the second and final readings of all these things. My discussion and introduction here tonight is specific for the budget, but it does cover the next item, which is the property tax. We're required to have a budget first and then council has to consider a property tax rate that would support that budget. Nothing to add, sir? Here are questions and standby as you go forward.
All right. Good deal. With that, we'll move to those citizens that signed up to speak. I think we have three?
Four.
Four. Okay. Take a number. All right. First up, in the order received, Jimmy Davis. Just go to the podium, give us your name, address, and there should be a timer on the screen for three minutes.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combsville. Appreciate the efforts of some council to get to, get down to the no new revenue rate. We all know major financial hardship on individuals is coming next year. The difference between the proposed rate and the no new revenue rate is significant. It's not your responsibility, council, to tell staff where to make cuts. You tell them how much money they have to spend, like my employer does. I encourage you to do all you can to get to the no new revenue rate. Maybe there's some room in the motor pool fund. Maybe we don't need $2.1 million to add to the fund balance. Maybe add a million, save people a million bucks. The first budget presentation was August 13th. Slide 107 showed an FY '22 amended year-end revenue of $51.3 million for the enterprise fund. Slide 97 said they needed a 13.1% increase. Today, slide 37 of that presentation reflects a $2.4 million increase in water and sewer charges, an extra expense of a million dollars thanks to the drought, bringing the total added reserves to $1.4 million. But we're still being told they still need 13.1%. The 1.4 million increase in reserves is being untouched. The $1.4 million increase in reserves is being untouched. With the hardships residents are facing, that money should be used to offset some of the increase. It would make up almost 25% of the $5.8 million they need. Now, I understand some will say, well, it'll reduce future increases in future years. But that's not going to impact next year's economy and the hardships people are facing just putting bread on the table. Whatever you can do to help lower the rate would be good. Otherwise, you're going to price residents out of their homes and gentrify Pearland. Now, I know some, you're not responsible for where we are today. You didn't approve these massive amounts of debt to hit residents all at once. We can thank those who served the last decade for that. But you can control how much more debt is added in the next couple of years, how much more sewer capacity is needed. We don't know, because we neglected I and I for years. Maybe we're overpaying at JHEC and the surface water treatment plant. We know we would have overpaid $100 million more in capital in Mino at Berry Rose if it wasn't for the mayor asking questions. How many other projects are we overpaying for? It's easy to recommend expensive projects when you don't pay a property tax or water bill. We need leadership change that can provide the necessary services, keeping the burden on residents in mind. We don't have that today. Changes are needed, whether it's personnel or sell on the utility and let a company provide the service. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Next up, Matthew Kozloski. Fill the podium, name and address, and you have three minutes. Make it five, since you're with the association.
My name is Matthew Kozloski, 701 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Today, I'm representing the Pearland Professional Firefighters Association. Thank you, Mayor and councilmen, for your continual investment in the citizen's safety. I wanted to speak tonight on the proposed four additional firefighters that would assist in supporting our community and our membership. These additional positions would ensure that citizens are getting provided high-quality, consistent coverage of fire and EMS. These positions would make certain we are not jeopardizing safety due to gaps in coverage. Our members are continuously working overtime to maintain the professional coverage that we provide. Mandatory overtime, unfortunately, has become the standard, not the exception. With these additional four, our members will finally be able to utilize the benefit time that's provided without feelings of guilt that somebody else may be called in away from their family. These positions will assist in ensuring the men and women of the Pearland Fire Department get the proper time off to decompress and improve their mental health. With the growing population and increase in call volume, we find these positions are keeping us on pace to meet the need of the citizens, and will have a positive impact on our retention of the high-quality individuals we already have. I want to thank you for considering these positions. As someone on the line, I know that when these were announced, it was a really good boost in morale, that we might finally get some relief in the mando, that sometimes our members end up, you know, working consistent 48s, 24, 48, 24, 48s. Thank you again to our city staff, our administration, and each of you for investing in our department that allows our citizens to feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments and for your service. Next up, Adam Carroll with PPOA. So five minutes. Name and address, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Adam Carroll, 12511 Britt Road, 77584. I'm here on behalf of the Pearland Police Officers Association. I apologize, the last meeting, I was not able to attend and certainly wanted to, but my 73-year-old father feels like he has the body of a 33-year-old and did some things he should not have. He is okay now. So I know there was some discussion on something I'd previously spoke about with the 20 hours of additional sick buy and 1% added to the current proposal. We do want to say thank you for adding the 20 additional sick hours. That is much appreciated, and I understand why there might be a little confusion on the 1%. Last time I spoke, sort of ran short on time and couldn't really explain the why, and talked a little bit about the potential retention issue, not only in police departments across the nation, but this state and potentially locally. I don't think it's quite hit here yet, but I see the writing on the wall. I think it's going to get here. In fact, our state legislature is now talking about possibly making the minimum age 18 instead of 21, in hopes that you get more people interested in being in law enforcement. So I also want to say, it wasn't just a possible retention issue with PD. There is a retention issue with the city as a whole, departments across the board. I'm a boot on the ground. My ears to the street, I hear what's going on. Employees across the board feel like they're short-staffed. They need help, additional employees. And I was really trying to hope to spark some conversation on what we can do to combat that. And certainly, right off the bat, more staffing, maybe more competitive salaries. And one of the reasons I was throwing in that 1% is, it wasn't just for PD, it was for all city staff, everybody, because they're in the same boat that we're in. And if not for the jobs they do, our job would certainly be a lot harder, if not impossible. You know, we do a salary survey, and that's to bring us up to average. At the same time we do that, all of our competitors are doing a market survey too, and reconfiguring, and so they move up. And where does that leave us? Right here, I guess below average, or still trying to struggle to get up to average. So when we come around to doing another salary survey, are we going to be even more behind the bar? A lot of our competitors are already talking about a 5%, and that's likely what they're going to get this year. Now, there's a difference between your step and, I guess, the additional COLA, et cetera. So however we want to phrase that. But I've been very specific in asking the competitors, is that combined with or without your step? And hands down, it's 5% plus our step. Whereas we're looking at it as step, COLA combined. Something I just ask you to take into consideration, not only now, but in the future. And again, this ain't just for PD. I'm trying to look out for everybody, because we work with these folks, and they need it I've heard talk about the budget being tight, no more money to go around. Also heard that we have excess money, so we can cut. I'll be honest, it doesn't matter to the employees. What the employees hear is, there's no more money or additional staffing or salaries. That's what employees hear, no matter which way you go with it. So I would just ask that you just look out for the best interest of the employees, because they're the ones that make this city run. If not for them, the cogs would stop, city wouldn't be near as efficient. The cost of providing city services, it's a cost, and you can't continue to do more with less. Rubber band's going to break at some point. So I'm just asking that you be ahead of the curve on that, if you can. Sort of one last thing, try to lighten this up a little bit, particularly for all the department heads in the room. The police association would like to show our appreciation to our fellow employees and invite them out free of charge when we have our Party with the Police concert on September 24th. All we ask is, bring your city ID, so you get in for free. And if you have a guest, just ask that you pay for them, because all those proceeds go to charities, and those charities are what, that money is used to contribute to sponsorships and local charities. Last year, money such as this helped us donate $5,000 towards Pearland's first all-inclusive playground. So, you know, we may not all be able to contribute that much, but a little bit from all of us, we can put together big amounts like that. So please spread the word and have the employees come out and have a fun pre-night. Thank you.
Very cool. Thank you for those comments. And the last one's for a different agenda item. Oh, that's okay. It's a specific agenda item later in the agenda, all right? So with that, we'll move to questions, comments, and concerns from council. Before we do, just kind of set the table just a little bit. We're talking about the budget, and immediately behind it is the tax rate. So if you approve a budget, you got to fund it somehow. If you want to change the funding, then we probably need to have a conversation about the budget. So I know we'll formally talk about the tax rate and put it on the table, but you got to talk about both of them, kind of, you know, mutually at the same time, because, again, if you approve this budget as is, then you have to fund it. So with that, let's turn it open to questions, comments, and concerns from the council. Be happy to get started. Member Carbone?
All right. First up, maybe a softball. If you go to slide 41, there was a public comment talking about the, I think it's the difference in beginning cash balance for the enterprise fund. I believe there's a footnote. Could you walk us through that and what's changed since, I believe the first time we saw this was August 13th?
So I'll turn it over to Amy for that, but thanks for pointing that out. We did update the purposes of here, and that was primarily for the multi-year, to give a flavor for that. But the ratios are worked on annual revenue, so that doesn't really pertain to the ratios we have to meet, but Amy, I'll let you explain that better.
So it was, we had proposed the 13.1% consistently throughout, and if there, we did not make any intentional changes to fund balance calculations, as far as I'm aware. If the resident would like to send me an email, I can get back in writing on the specifics of the calculation, but I guess I need a little more info.
But we did update for the purpose of the multifamily with the revenue interest we were seeing, and so that you were, we were saying-
Okay, that's what we're discussing. Okay, so yes, the multi-year model incorporated the fact that, hey, we know that, we model based off sort of this annual, what is an average weather year look like, wet or dry? And then, but we wanted to get sort of updated fund balances based off the fact that, hey, we are having this drought. What is that going to do to revenue and also expenditures? We've seen the revenue go up as people use more water when it's dry out, and now we're starting to see the expenditures come in and be billed to the city as, you know, producing more water also costs more money. So there's a bit of a delay there. Overall, it doesn't affect the 13.1% increase, because we are already using fund balance to get down to a 13.1% amount. Utilizing more fund balance won't affect the amount we need to raise, because the driving metric this year for the rate increase is the 1.15x bond coverage ratio, which is your revenue minus your operating expenses. And we can, there it is, revenue minus operating expenses over your current debt obligation. So using fund balance doesn't really factor into this 1.15.
Makes sense, Member Carbone. We did update it for the purposes of funds for the year, but if you go back to the income statement, at bottom right, as we pointed out, the 13.1 for the year is designed to and only gets us right at the ratio. There's no extra over and above that, that 1.15 in the rate.
Yeah. If I can reframe that, so when we first started, that 16, 16 and change million number in the bottom right-hand corner was, what, 14.6? At some point between August 13th and now, we said, hey, it was a dry year, we're going to be more profitable, because we sell water. And so that changed from 14.6 to 16 million. Yeah, we've got an additional 1.4 million in the bank, but because of this formula, we're not able to give any rate, any rate decrease, even though we've got an extra 1.4 million in cash coming into the year.
That is correct, because it's a one-time cash increase. We're not going to budget, assuming we're going to have a drought next year. It's been raining a lot, actually, the last month, so it's just hard to predict the weather here in Houston. We always budget for an average here. Where that extra money will come in handy, though, is in future years, and we talked about that, and I know that focuses on this year's rate, but that does give us more runway, more balance to give residents breathing room on any future rate increases, beginning in FY '24, assuming the 1.15x ratio is also met in those years.
Okay. I hear that. I understand what you're saying. I don't know that I agree with it. I'll let other councilmembers opine, but that's troubling. It's, hey, we found an extra 1.4 million, but we're not going to touch the rate at all.
So again, it's, go back to, this formula drives the next one. I hear you. But the other thing I'd point out is, we're still running an operating deficit at 4 million, so we're cutting that back a little bit for the 22 with the minus come in, but that's not affecting, you know, we're still running a regular operating deficit and keeping that as low as we can.
That's all I have right now, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll echo some of the comments I had last meeting on this. I realize that we've got two different funds that we're looking at. We got the enterprise and general fund, but at the end of the day, you know, the residents should see dollars coming out of their pockets, regardless of where it's going, whether it's to a utility bill or to a tax bill. So I would like to see some, or, you know, it seems like we don't have very much wiggle room on the enterprise side, but on the general fund side, you know, just kind of going through this and thinking about how we could potentially address it, if we knock off .766388 of a penny, did I say that correctly? Yeah, not a total penny, but .766388, and that'd be about 1.2 million. I'm totally in favor of the drainage crews, the raises, the increased sick leave buyback, all of the other highlights. If we wanted to do those, we're 96 days right now on reserves. We could draw a little bit down, still be above our policy minimum of 90 days. That would bring an additional cost saving on the overall calculations. That would bring the rate down to .616102. And then we would see about, we'd cut that, you know, effective increase that people would be seeing on the water side down substantially. They would see a little bit of cost savings there, I think. And if we wanted to do the other highlight areas, like I said, we could draw down on the reserves and still be above target. That's kind of what I would like to see, if we had any change in what we've kind of agreed upon. But I'm just one member up here, so I just wanted to throw that out there and kind of see if there's any other buy-in to something like that. Thank you, Mayor.
Josh, can you pull up the agenda item, my supplements? I'm always doing that. I want to thank the staff, the administration, the council. We've been talking about this since like March, I want to say, it's like our first, March or February this year. And it's kind of this evolving thing that just continues, and we get more data, and then tax data comes in from the county. So there's a lot of moving parts to this, but I'm deeply appreciative. I think we're on our fourth or fifth hearing, and now we're officially having some votes happen today. But the thing that, you know, I just keep resonating, this is the first page of the budget books, literally, of the 600 pages, this is the first one. You know, this is the biggest budget in the history of the city. We're raising more money, almost $11 million, 10.7 million this year. And that's not an insignificant amount of money. It's a gigantic amount of money. Can we go to the next page? This is our expenses out of the general fund for the last 10 years. So we didn't pick an arbitrary point, but we kind of start at 58.5, lower left, and you can follow the little red line, and then there's a gigantic jump from 22 to 23. And that's that $10 million that I just showed you on the first page. That's no fluff. You saw with your own eyes, this is only the first page of the budget book, it's $10 million, and that's not the magical fairy on the federal government. That's just, it's our money. There's no Pearland money. It's just our money. And it's just, it's a lot. And I struggle because- And it's just, it's a lot, and I struggle because the city expenditures are growing faster than inflation, the 12 months. Inflation's about 9% as of June. We're closer to almost 11% in just one year's time. That's real. You know, you see it, and, you know, I've just been consistent on this budget. This is the one that right now the citizens of Pearland can't afford during this recession. Now has two quarters of down growth. The Fed chairman has been insistent in saying he's going to keep raising interest rates until every single drop of inflation is out. That might be another six or seven rate hikes. We don't have a magic ball, but I take him at his word. He has been consistent this past year, and mortgages has gone from somewhere in the low threes to now somewhere in the mid-fives. And so I just, I'm struggling during a recession pulling more money out of people's pockets. It's just where I am at. This budget does a lot of good things. I'm not going to even detract from that. We are going to bring some firefighters on. We're going to bring some equipment on. We're going to give needed raises. There's a lot of stuff in this budget that is extraneous, that is asking to just take money out of people's pockets, and I just, I can't necessarily get there. I've heard a lot of comments in the last two hearings, just won't raise a penny out of people's pockets. And I hear that. I hear that. Truly, I'm going to accept that on its face, but when we talk about the water rates like Member Carbone talked about, we literally talked about 13.1%, and then when the budget officer tells us, we actually got a little more revenue in, there was not one discussion, can we lower that rate any? I mean, there's zero pity for the people that actually have to buy the water. And I struggle with that because I go to the grocery store, like many of you go to the grocery store, and HEB is not giving me any discounts. They're not, nothing is happening there. So I just want to talk through just a little bit that, on ad valorem, if you have an exemption, are we going to be okay? If you have a senior's exemption, a veteran's exemption, if you have your homestead, you're getting the benefit of the homestead cap loss that is right now at 10%. The average property in the city of Pearland went up 13%. You're going to, you're getting your little homestead exemptions covering the three. The state is mandating that we can't charge you the 10. That is a one-year fix. That is an accounting trick. It's a one-year gimmick that will not be in place next year. I bet you my bottom dollar that won't happen, but we will get to pay next year the full value of our houses and our businesses, and there are zero property exemptions for businesses. There's no seniors exemptions for businesses. There's no exemptions on water. No seniors exemptions on water. So, you know, I have an immense amount, and we go see some of our restaurants, they don't get any exemptions. They're going to pay the full brunt of the $110 million largest budget in the city's history, and if you're a business that uses water, like a restaurant, God forbid, you're getting pounded in this budget, and you're paying your fair share and then some. When I'll say this, and just kind of my thoughts, and we're going to talk about the budget, we're going to talk about the rate, is this, I can't in good conscience support these tax and spend policies. I have tried to be straightforward, ask, what are our goals? Our last meeting when we were over-contributing, I didn't get a clear answer on goals. I didn't get a clear answer on a lot of things. It's just getting money to get money, and in times like this recession, I can't do that. And so, you know, we're all struggling, higher energy, higher food, higher cost of ownership. That's not going away in this budget, and I wish we would look at this harder, we would put for more discussion. I hope that happens tonight, but I just am not going to support right now this budget as it's currently.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments? Member Kate?
I don't have a whole lot to say. I think I've kind of agonized over this over the last couple of weeks. I don't like knowing that we're operating some departments kind of by the seat of our pants, kicking things down the road. That bothers me, but at the same time, with the recession probably coming up and inflation the way it is, I mean, at my house, we've really gone through the budget and cut out stuff and tried to tighten, tighten things up, and we're spending less. And I, I know the city has to have money to run. I mean, I do, I get that, but if all the residents are feeling the same way I am, you know, just personally, not even, I'm not speaking as counsel, just personally, with money the way it is, this is, I would like to do better for them, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So that being said, I've agonized over this because I know the staff has worked hard on the budget, and I'm appreciative of that, but at the same time, I think we could do a little bit better.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments? Member Coza?
Yes, Eric, on the water rate, why is it that you can use the 1.4 million in the future but not today?
The model shows that in future years, our revenue based off the amount of debt we project to issue, that 1.15x bond coverage will be bringing in enough revenue that that won't be the restraining factor on the fund. Instead, fund balance will shift to be the restraining factor on the fund, and that will provide a little more runway. We currently show fund balance coming down to the fund target in FY '20, end of FY '25, beginning of FY '26. Adding the additional, we'll call it $1 million because of the drought, will help push that out a few months, but we're talking about a large, large enterprise, and we're talking about maybe an extra $1 million in revenue due to the drought, 1.6. I don't know what the net is because we haven't seen those costs come in yet, so I can't tell you. It will be a net positive, but I don't know what the overall net is, but in the larger scheme of things, it's not a huge amount. It's not going to have a huge effect on rates either way.
Right. Well, as some may or may not know, not in the distant past, Jackson, Mississippi has not taken care of their water system, and currently they have an issue with being able to supply potable water to their citizens. And when you cut here like we did last time and push it off into future years, at some point, you end up paying the piper when you can't have water. Currently, we've been through this budget process, and I know our wastewater issues right now with Longwood and Berry Rose. Longwood, if I remember correctly, we're at 90% of what Robert said, and Berry Rose, if I remember, we're right around the threshold, maybe a little over 75%. Is that true, Trent? I see you were nodding.
Yes, sir. Those are accurate.
Okay. And if I remember correctly, basically, when you hit those thresholds, that's when we need to start looking at it and start addressing the issues.
Yes, sir. Member Coza, the 75% threshold, when we hit that percentage of capacity over three months, then it triggers needing to start de-planning and designing of an expansion of the plant, and then when you hit the 90%, you have to start the construction for that expansion. Longwood, because of limited growth in that basin, we've been able to work with the state to not have to enact that expansion at this point.
So currently, we're walking a tight rope, is what you're saying.
Yes, sir. We've got, we do have to get that Berry Rose plant expansion moving and that transfer of Longwood to that plant as well.
Okay. And as far as that goes for folks that are here that are citizens such as everyone else up here on council, my memory serves me correctly, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of about 260 million to fix that situation between Longwood and Berry Rose.
I don't recall the exact number, but it is over $200 million for both of those projects together.
Right, to shutter Longwood and to rebuild a new facility at Berry Rose.
Yes, sir. That's our current estimates.
All right. So those are things that, whether we like it or not, if we don't tend to, and you want to go flush your toilet, it ends up really happening. So it's something that we do have to look at, that we do have to take care of or run the risk of turning into Jackson, Mississippi. I also submitted a Wall Street Journal that said it's not just, article that's not just tied to Jackson, Mississippi. Their estimates are about 1 trillion across the United States. So it's not just Pearland, it's not just Friendswood, it's not just Jackson, Mississippi. It's a problem that we have, these facilities that we're talking about, early 60s when they were built.
Yes, sir. The original basins that are still in operation today were built in the 60s.
So with that being said, we're in the 60s, give or take years on that. That's probably a pretty decent run with it. Sure, we could probably patch it a little longer, but from that, if we don't address it and don't take care of it, the day could come that you couldn't flush your toilet. So I understand why we might not like rate increases. They're necessary evils to be able to maintain and be able to take care of stuff.
Member Coza, if I could just help also illustrate your point. You're accurate about the large capital expenses we're obligated to, to meet our requirements for compliance, and I would say that, there's a comment about Berry Rose, and what we looked at and looked at with Freezing Nichols was the timing of that, where we pulled that lever. That's helped us benefit last year and this year, but that's all been built into the rate model, and, you know, that's, those improvements are still going to happen. It's just the timing that we were able to adjust a little bit and how that was, that's what we looked at with Freezing Nichols. So there wasn't like an extra 100 million or anything that is now not there. It's the timing of that and how that's built out. All right. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Member Barry?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few things, and, you know, I kind of echo the sentiments of Member Carbone and all the previous members, Member Coza. I have a hard time bottoming out our enterprise fund, given that we do have an excess of 1.4 million, and knowing that we need to keep our ratios at a certain level, all the while operating at a budget deficit. Meanwhile, for the last couple of months, we've just, just about every day, we've gotten a notice for a water main break somewhere in the city. And that's a little frightening because, you know, along with those items go, emergency times, overtime, and you just, you start adding up all the expenses associated with that because you never really know when those are going to happen. That being said, I don't like the idea of the 1.4 million excess in the enterprise fund when it comes to that, but at the same time, I realize that we can't just automatically change rates on the fly anytime we have a little bit of an excess. I think everybody in here would love to be able to have a little bit of cushion in their piggy bank for unforeseen issues, and I think 1.4 million, which is probably 2% to 3% of the total overall revenue of the enterprise fund, is not terrible. That being said, the one thing that does disappoint me a little bit is the fact that we do have Berry Rose and Longwood in such disarray. There's, and I'm not going to call myself an expert in water reclamation or anything along those lines, but at the end of the day, I have a little bit of common sense when it comes to maintenance and updates of large capital projects, and for us to have to have an overall, an overhaul or a redo of Berry Rose and actually conversion of Longwood, have this kind of money put out after we've just brought on a brand-new water treatment plant for $175 million is exhausting. And I look at the numbers, 13% increase this year, 16 next year, 19, and we continue on, and, you know, it's frightening. So what I would like to do is, you know, as we're doing these capital projects, understand what our long-term capital outlay looks like over a five-year period. Let me, let me just give you an example on this new plant, $175 million, okay? What are we going to do? What's our, what's our long-term plan on being able to update and maintain this facility? We can't consider long-term just saying, okay, well, in 30 years from now, we're going to just have to rebuild the whole thing. That's just unreasonable. So I hope that as we go along, and it's going to be one of, one of the budget items I continue to look at, is that when we do start the work on Berry Rose, and we're going to have to do that, when the surface water treatment plant comes online, one of the, one of the things that I want to know is, how are we going to maintain this so we don't have a huge capital outlay at one given time, like we're faced with right now? $535 million over the next several years is a chunk of money, and our citizens can't afford to continue to pay the rates that we're, we're looking at right now. So that's my, those are my comments. That's my angst. At the end of the day, the internal service funds, I kind of like the idea of having those buckets there. I do like the idea of putting caps in those buckets so that we don't necessarily build those funds infinitesimally so that they just become funds that grow forever. So I like the idea of doing that. We haven't really talked about that, but that's, that's something I'd like to put on the table. Outside of that, I'm going to yield the rest of my time for that.
Anything?
Yeah, there's, you know, in this business, there's a lot of variables in there. Yeah, as the city continues to grow, the capacity for water increases, or sewer increases, and then you've got your state regulations that trigger something to do on your water or on your wastewater. So it's very difficult to do that, to look at, continue growing the city and improving the city, but growing it, but at the same time, you know, you can't let the maintenance go by the wayside and some of the capacities change, and so you have to come in and increase those capacities and some of those. And water and sewers, you know, that's a heck of a cost. I mean, you just don't get everybody to come in here to do that, you know, and you talk about a different type of staff and those with professional engineers in there and really quality people. And so, you know, we enjoy the growth on one side, and then we hate the cost on the other, so I don't know if there's a happy medium in this at all, but as the Pearland becomes and is the city of request by most people that are moving out of Houston, coming to Pearland, and so as that continues, I mean, you just got to do it, and, you know, on things like that, and you get into situation into your wastewater and stuff like that, you get in, into that, into capacity, and it triggers another thing that the state requires you to do, and that other thing costs you a lot of money. So it's, you know, lesser two evils, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah, there's a, there's a cost to doing business, and at some point, you have to figure out what that cost is going to be and what our service is going to be. I'd like to weigh in on a couple of things and talk about a little bit of misinformation that's out there as a result of budget time. As we, every year, there's always the opportunity for some misinformation and the way it's spun out there. So a couple of things, I'd like to have a little conversation about the no new revenue rate and what that really means. So if you talk to the average person on the street, which I've done quite a bit over the last two weeks, talking about no new revenue, I've asked them, what does no new revenue mean to you? What does that mean? When you hear that, what does that mean? If you go to the comptroller's website, most people echo the first paragraph of what's on the comptroller's website, and I'll paraphrase it. Basically, whatever your revenue from property taxes that you raised last year, no new revenue means it's whatever the rate is to make it equal to the same revenue as last year. That's what the comptroller's office says. Now, if you keep reading paragraph after paragraph after paragraph, put supplement number one up, Josh, you'll see that there's a calculation worksheet that would make the IRS envious, okay? Nine pages long, and it excludes this and excludes that, and it multiply by .75, subtract this, and it keeps going on and on and on, and it spits out a calculation at the end. In fact, what's troubling for us and even for the residents, we here out of Austin, and you can just scroll through it, I'm not looking for anything in particular, you can just scroll through it. It's page after page after page after page, and at the end of the day, it doesn't even give us credit for voter-approved items. With the 2019 bond program that was approved by the voters, we don't even get credit for that in our budget. In fact, it works against us. In fact, it works against us. Not even there. It's not even recognized. So when you've got a 2.5 million dollar debt service increase due to 2019 bond programs that were voted on by the public, that counts against you in the no new revenue rate. No new revenue this particular year comes in, not same revenue, comes in about 4 million dollars below last year's revenue. When you're trying to plan, and here's the other thing, Clay or Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but this calculation literally comes in within a week.
Five working days.
Five working days before we deliver the budget to council. We don't know what it's going to look like until we get the certified role. So literally, it's a last minute deal. We have plans. We sit back, as as Member Cam Carr said, this starts back in February and early March when we have a budget retreat, we have a goal setting retreat that we go back. What are our goals and aspirations for this next coming year? We do all that. We try to make it council driven, council led. And many of those things are here and we're staff is working in that direction. And then we get delivered five days before we deliver the budget, what our no new revenue rate is going to be. Lot of conversation about we want the no new revenue. We all want that. Let's talk about last year's no new revenue rate. A lot of conversation out on social media about, well, we've been able to get below no new revenue and stay at no new revenue the last two years. Last year, no new revenue rate actually increased revenue 3 million dollars. How is that no new revenue? This calculation is just that. It's just some worksheet calculation, and it doesn't mean no new revenue. And that's a sad thing. You what? Right. So that's the sad thing is it gets put out there and it gets touted by a lot of statewide politicians. But the truth is, it doesn't even mean no new revenue. But yet people say, I want the no new revenue rate because that means no new revenue. And anything above no new revenue is a tax increase. Last year, below the no new revenue, we raised your taxes. If you look at the physical dollars that came in, it was below the no new revenue and we raised, we raised revenue. We raised taxes. So wanted to spell that. We've got needs. We have wants. There's always wants, right? We have to mitigate wants. We have to focus on our needs. At the same time, we have to recognize we're in an unstable environment financially in our country. I'm just going to say it that way. It's unstable. You can't get things to finish projects. Sky high inflation. We don't know if people are going to have job loss or not. Most of what I'm hearing from a recessionary standpoint is most people, jobs will be will be good. They're not going to have massive layoffs. Doesn't mean that somebody won't, but we're not going to have massive layoffs. So I wanted to spell some of this no new revenue stuff that's out there. Go to my supplement number two. We also hear about how we have budgets and we start off October 1 on a budget. And we don't want to raise any more revenue than we have to and all those kind of things. But over this last particular calendar year, fiscal year, we've had six budget amendments. As citizens here, how did you know you had, we had changes to the budget six times? Six times council voted to increase spending, increase expenses. Here it is. 7.4 million dollars increase in expenses and 5.3, almost 5.4 million in revenue, making the amended budget 106.9, almost 107 million dollars. Yet we tout, we had a budget of 99 million. Amended budget became your budget. You had 106, almost 109 million dollar budget. Now, we should live within our means. We should do what we can to to curb spending. This happened. Shows who voted for what. It's all right here. But we hear a lot around budget time, what we should do, but then six times we amend our budget. Historically, in Pearland, we usually do two budget amendments. Fiscal year ends September 30. There's always contracts and those types of things that are in process that are going to carry over to the next budget. So we do a budget amendment, help me, December ish, end of October, maybe in early December, a budget carryover, right? That's a budget amendment. And then somewhere midyear, March, April, May, somewhere in that ballpark, we'll do a midyear adjustment based on additional sales tax coming in or additional property tax collections come in, those types of things that will amend our our budget. This year, we amended the budget six times. Not a single person spoke out against the budget amendments, but they happen every two months. You can see it. There they are. And so when we talk about truth and taxation, let's talk about the truth. Let's talk about the truth. Okay? Back to the no new revenue. So there's been several comments about they don't like various things within the budget. I haven't heard anybody offer an amendment. You got close, but you didn't say, I'll offer an amendment. And and I think that was the, that's always the right way to go. And, you know, at the same time, there has been conversations about the no new revenue and where would we have to go to get to no new revenue rate? And I'd like the city manager, if he could, just briefly explain if we said, as one of our our speakers, it said, it's not for the council to come in here and just start cutting. It's to give a number and let staff, let staff go and make the necessary cuts. So if council said no new revenue rate, which is, I don't know, it's 54 cents and several other numbers behind it. Where would we go? What would you bring back to us? Keep in mind, we have two budget readings. Tonight's number one, two weeks would be number two.
So if you go to slide eight to answer that question, Mayor, it'd be logical that, you know, that you you start from where you're at and the the existing budget, you haven't heard anybody, you know, say we want to drop programs or reduce service levels, et cetera, et cetera. So the logical place would be to, sorry, 10. The logical place would be to the supplements, and those are summarized on that slide. And that gets into the competitive raises that we have for that is for both the pay plan and for funding the promised steps. The drainage crew, something that council identified, but that's a recurring cost. And that that top line item that we've all said we've we want to support. I won't, I wouldn't mention the UDC because that's a one time cost. But the four firefighters, and I feel strongly about that one with the balancing out the shifts and getting a little bit of relief for reducing mandatory overtime and allowing our people to take the the time that they've been allotted off. That is a real concern and problem, and this would go a long ways towards mitigating that. The telecom operators, again, you know, we've got people in the field, but if we don't have sufficient resources to communicate with them about and talk to the residents on those calls, those are hard positions to fill, but we do feel strongly that's the top priority out of police for increasing those. We'd have to revisit that. And then the equipment, again, that's a one time. So these are the areas, and this adds up to 5.1 million dollars that's quote unquote new into into the budget. So this would be where to look. If that wasn't efficient, you know, we'd have to look at some of the other things that we do, you know, special events, other kinds of activities, you know, that if we got in the situation where we had to pull that back and, you know, that that's legitimate. But we'd have to have a conversation about whether, you know, that's what we want to do. But there's not a lot of places that are outside of our core functions and keeping up the day to day. But so this would be the first place to look if we wanted to start to go at that. And if I could amplify one thing you said, Mayor, actually, last year, the craziness and the inadequacy of this no new revenue, it's not as advertised. Last year, no new revenue would have brought 6 million dollars more into the city. We adopted it at 3 million. But the the actual calculation that we got back, so it does not function as quote unquote no new revenue. And, you know, it's 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 impossible task. The state's set for itself by trying to claim that. But when you look across this big state and all the different situations, there's no formula that could do that. What you get is this eight pages that, you know, try to factor in this and take out that, but it doesn't work as advertised.
So this, even the 5.1 wouldn't get us to the no new revenue. And I can't remember, gets us about halfway to the no new revenue rate. And a couple of things for the public to understanding and council to understand this as well. If if we don't adopt a budget tonight and we kick it to two weeks and we have to do it on a once and only, well, that requires six votes, period. Requires six votes. So if we have two dissenting, then we don't have a budget with fiscal year starting in a week. Okay, that means last year's budget automatically goes into effect, which gets us down to 99 million dollars. But it's totally different priorities. It's based on the priorities from last year, totally different priorities from this year. You're talking about everything that's on this sheet here going away as well as well as many other things that were, you know, not in that budget. And so that's, that's why we we need to hear up here, what do we want to direct staff to do and either make it? If we don't vote for the budget tax rate, we don't have five votes for the tax rate, it automatically shifts to the no new revenue rate. It does. So we could get there by not voting for a budget, going back to last year's budget. Then we would literally probably spend the entire calendar year amending our budget. Trying to put it to table where we are in approving this budget. We haven't heard any amendments. Lot of people, nobody likes to pay 13% increase. I don't want to pay it. But also want to make sure that we pay our bills and we deliver our projects. So we got to figure that out. Member Cam Carr, you you want to say something?
Mayor, is the floor open? I think everybody's spoke.
Yeah, everybody spoke.
I think your comment's super thoughtful. I'd like to clarify a couple of items. Can you pull back up the item under my amendment or addendum? Couple of things to clarify, and I this is more towards the staff, it's not to the members of the council. But if if we're struggling with the worksheets and don't think that they're working, we need to stop what we're doing. If we're saying the no new revenue rate creates more revenue than it's supposed to, then over here, we we go other times and say that it's it's working. We needed to stop what we're doing and sit down with the tax tester collector and start over because we're not the only city that is complicated. I hate to say it, but we pay a lot of people a lot of money to figure this out. If they had told us last year that we were going to be creating 4 or 6 million dollars in revenue, which I haven't seen, this is a lot of hierarchy. I'd like to see a memo on that. We need to, we need to get different people. I don't know how to say it. If we're getting 6 million dollars after approving the no new revenue rate or 4 million, those people got to go. Don't know how to say it. But that's, that's, it seems very straightforward to me. On this item, this is a state mandated sheet, and it just says very clearly, 10.75 million is coming in the door. If we go to the next page, we're starting at the 99 million. Where we start, a year to year is very clear. I agree with the mayor. We did do the amendments, but those are as sales tax dollars came in, they were dollars in our hands. Literally got our reimbursements back from the state and then priorities that didn't make it the beginning of the last budget came onboard. That is different than saying we're just spending money willy nilly. The 110 is the starting point. Sales tax dollars will come in. This budget will grow. You're saying we have to have a discussion. The part that I think is very interesting and informing is when we talked about the 1.4, literally over contributing, we can't do anything about any, the way this budget is. We're not willing to touch it because we have to worry about the issue way, way down the road. And I I just, we have to get there.
It's tough.
We have to worry about the issue today. I'm aware of the item down the road, but we're at this bridge today, right now. The bridge in 2027, we have a lot of time to get there. And I think it's unfortunate that we're not willing to give a second look on budgetary items to help people who are actually the citizens we serve. The second thing I want to clear the air on is the proposal was provided on August 22, so two meetings ago. It had 2.8 million dollars in savings out of these internal revenue funds. We were literally over contributing revenue over in expenses for the year and padding that blanket. Didn't get a vote. We didn't ask for it to get a vote, but when there's somebody saying we, nobody's offered or nobody talked about or nobody's discussed, I just wanted to spell that that that's in a memo. It's attached to a public item. It's there. It's addressed to the public. There is something out there. It was discussed here. It sounded like there was two or three people wanting to look at it, but we never, we never push it. So I just wanted to spell that, like, and talked about items. The other thing on the list that was provided on that, there's other items, equipment items that we're buying. Chief, you got to forgive me, the fire truck that we found out, you know, 60 days ago, all of a sudden needed to be bought because the last administration on fire wasn't doing their bit, wasn't wasn't keeping up with it. And now we've had emergency fire trucks, and if I remember, we bought one last year. So I'm not saying that that's the answer, but just these needs and wants, all of a sudden, are all coming at the same time instead of us having this discourse. And so I agree with you, Mayor. Maybe the no new rate is overly draconian, but moving in that direction, I don't think is a bad thing for the citizens. And I really, I would like to noodle on this more. If we have to vote on it as it is, where it is, I'm not supportive. I just won't get there. But we we need to, we just got to do better. I don't think it's 99 million dollars necessarily better. I would like to be there, but maybe that's not possible. But 110 on the front end, when we're over contributing to funds, when we're literally getting the most water rate increase we can possibly get and not giving any kind of sympathy for the person, it's just, it feels heartless. I don't know how else to con, you know, contemplate it. And it's difficult, and there's no exemptions. No senior gets 13% less water next year. They just get to pay it. And over the four year, if we pull back the water sheet, it's 71% over the next, was it 48 months, the next four fiscal years? That's 1.17 the cost of what it is today. It's real money, but there's also real resources getting put in the ground that we have to go and develop. So I'm not unsympathetic. I just, we got to knock down that 110 somewhere. It can't just be that big.
And I just want to clarify one thing. In these numbers, there's sales tax in all these numbers. It's not like that's property tax and then sales tax is in on top of it. So we had an incredibly large year in sales taxes last year. I would not anticipate that being moving forward, more, you know, plain, single digit type increases, not double digit increases. So I just want to make sure that we're clarifying that. So you can see the struggle here. We have needs to deliver city services. But how do we pay for it? And, you know, asked, you know, during campaign time, people ask me about, you know, budgeting, and I said, look, budget comes, or a city comes with an expense. How much? We need to control. We need to control the wants and needs, and we need to make sure every line item is necessary and needed. And so, again, I go back and remember, Cam Carr did offer up an opportunity on the internal service funds for fleet and those types of things. We didn't get a second. I think you offered an amendment.
I'm, I'm.
Are you off, you actually, it was, it was a, it was a.
They're just floating a test balloon.
It was a budget. I I stand corrected. It was a budget workshop.
Yeah, and in fairness, the the staff didn't completely blow it up. I appreciate that. I'm just, I, the goal for me is always say, hey, what can we do? They always say, well, you got to start somewhere. That is one place, you know, and it's not, and to be frank, and I think, Mayor, you talked about this. We're executive leadership. We're not department heads. We're not boots on the ground by any stretch. I think Member Mr. Carroll said, he's boots on the ground. Department heads need to go have those discussions. They're the ones that approve the supplemental items that go in there. They need to go have the the hard look in the mirror because I see these faces. I see these people and they're telling us, can't do this. But it's not our job to go that in the weeds. We we're part time workers here, you know? So I would just ask that.
Yeah, and I get that, and I and I do. We appreciate all that. We've also had these budget workshops where we went over every single one of those items. And without exception, I mean, there was a vast consensus across the council. We wanted to move forward with those. So and then we get to the 11th hour here, we're ready, and we've got concerns over the budget. So I would still say we're about to go and just vote on the budget. If there's an amendment, once somebody wants to offer an amendment up, please do so. Otherwise, we're going to call for the vote on the budget.
Question, are the fees inclusive of this?
I believe so. And it was just the three.
It's a separate resolution, the revenue, the minimal.
New revenue.
Yeah.
Let me, hold on, I want to ask some clarifying questions. We had the fire fees that it was a 15 minute discourse, got down to three. The park and rec fees, were they included or not included?
The parking wreck fees, were they included or not included?
There's a separate development revenue ordinance, I'm sorry, non-development, and that's, the revenue's included in the budget, but the.
Is that because, I remember in the last meeting, no fee revenue was in this budget?
None of the, sorry, just to, to clarify, none of the new fees or the fee changes that the budget is not, except for the water rate, none of the budget is based off those revenues increased.
No park fees are in this budget, and the fire fees are in this budget?
No, they're in the fee schedule, so if the fee schedule is adopted as proposed.
Agreed, but on the revenue piece, like, that is not in there to fund.
Correct. The, the general fund is not reliant on the fees being proposed.
If we want to kill those fees, Darren, where do I go and do that? Do I do that on this one, or do I do that on number seven?
No, that would actually be on item number seven this evening.
I'm just putting that out there, I'm going to, I'm going to vote to amend that, that we're not paying more. This, this is not the time. I'm not saying it shouldn't happen, Chief, but now's not the time.
Any other questions, comments?
So I mean, as I said earlier, Mayor, I'm reiterating what I said last time, and I mean, if there's, I, like I said, I like to take the temperature of the room if there's no one else, who's willing to do that, but I, I put forth a, an idea and a concept, so if there are no other bites, I mean, I'm not going to waste my time with the.
Restate it.
Proposal of the amendment, but I do, I do have two scenarios really, but the one that I talked about earlier would be to knock off point seven six six three eight eight pennies, and just limit the priorities on the highlights to the drainage crew, the raises, and the sick leave increase, which would, for illustration purposes, reduce that thirteen point one percent increase, you know, just looking at the outflow of dollars from pocketbooks, down to roughly a five percent. I mean, there would be some relief there, and I remember looking at an increase of five point four percent for the, the trash next year as well. So I mean, that little, you know, dollar and some change every single month will offset some of those things. It's, it's not significant, but it's enough that we can absorb that, I think, from our fund balance, and we'd still be above policy. And that would take the rate from point six-two-three-seven-six-five down to six-one-six-one-zero-two on the next item. And that's what I propose there. If we wanted to completely offset the thirteen point one percent, that would require about two point nine million. If we did that, I mean, that would have to drop to about one point eight four cents based off of what we got here. I don't know that, I see a direct pathway to do that unless we were to drop the priorities that I had listed earlier, move those to some kind of a mid-year, and completely draw, draw down our fund balance a hit for, you know, maybe a couple tens of thousands of dollars, but we'd have to, we'd be able to see that one point eight, and then the adopted budget would drop down to one oh nine thirty from one-ten. So just some back of the napkin math there.
Staff, could you pull up slide eight?
Yeah, could you clarify what ones you're talking about, Mayor, Member Hernandez? Slide eight?
Sorry?
I think Member Carbone was going there, but what, which ones you're talking about on slide eight?
Also, on the highlights, the ones, the only ones that I would support moving forward would be the drainage crew, the raises, on the general fund side, and the sick leave increase.
So no police officer, no telecom op, police?
Correct, we could move those forward if we saw increases later down the road somewhere.
No four police or firefighter positions?
Correct.
Member Hernandez, I'm, I'm willing to go, I'm really, I'm willing to start from like a cleaner sheet of paper than this, I'm just not supportive, but if there was a, an opportunity with an amended number, a future date, I'm happy to look at that.
Sure, I mean, it, it, staff is more than welcome to offer alternatives, that's just what I see from the highlights. If I were to try to do something to offset some of these increases.
Go to seven, please.
But I'll, I'll go ahead and stop there, Mayor, that's all I've got.
So Mayor, I think where you were headed was helpful, if there's changes, there should be amendments, and so if that could be put into an amendment to say from this sheet, drop everything except for X, Y, and Z, so the council could consider that, I think that would be more tangible and something we could all work with.
You didn't, you, you need to put it in the form of an amendment, see if there's a second.
Or, or we could just vote, see where this goes. I mean, you might be able to get it as is, where is, and we can jam everybody who's on the other end of this budget, or we can start amending this. I don't know that we all want to sit here, go through an amendment, you know, votarama.
Well, I mean, if we don't hear an amendment, we, then we'll move forward. That's, I was just asking because there was, sounded like there was one coming, so I wanted to make a member the, the opportunity.
I wanted to know what Member Carbone was going to say.
Yeah, thank you. If you go to slide, well, yeah, eighty, so it'd be slide sixty-one, I believe. This shows how much time we've all spent up here from the beginning. Now, if you go back to slide four, it's slide thirty, or thirty of the PDF, it shows since the beginning, the consensus, no consensus, and where we're headed. Am I ecstatic about any of this? No, I think it's a good budget, I think it's where, where this process has brought us to tonight. There's a lot of rhetoric and a lot of, a lot of BS coming from up here, as there always But this is where we're at. There hadn't been consensus for any of this stuff, so I'm hesitant to put staff on the spot, to say bust out your calculator, and let's do this on the fly tonight. We want to make meaningful change, could have started in March, June, maybe the beginning of August, we have plenty of meetings, plenty of time, so I hesitate. There's been stuff said, you've tried to put stuff out there, there wasn't consensus, or be here, we would have talked about it.
The only thing I want to add, clarify, Member Carbone, is that we've had these budget books maybe three and a half weeks, maybe, maybe a little bit more than that, but it's not a full thirty days. And so the idea that, like, we've been sitting with the same one hundred and ten million dollar budget for six months, like, that, that hasn't been the case. We got this budget on a Friday night at eight PM and had to.
August, August fifth.
Yes, sir.
It's September twelfth.
Yeah, and so, like, that, you know, there, there's a game happening here, they're expert players, we're not, and we're playing cat and mouse here. And, and so, like, I just, I, I hear, we have had meetings, we show up on Saturday, we go to the, the, the nature center and discuss our priorities, but the, the grappling with, like, this one budget, I just want to get clarity, that, that has not been for the entirety of the six months.
I didn't hear six months either. I, we, we've gone through this, I think this is a good slide. I haven't heard an amendment to the budget offered, so Madam Secretary, I'm going to call for the vote.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Herr Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campar?
Nay.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Cade? The motion passes four to three.
With that, we'll move to item number six. Mr. Coza, would you place that on the table, please?
Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number sixteen-twenty. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of zero point six-two-three-seven-six-five, which is effectively a fourteen point eight-six percent increase in the tax rate.
Second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Now, can you explain?
So, since we're not at the calculation of the no new revenue rate, and whoever's doing, it's just math, so it wouldn't matter who is working that math, the, the numbers are accurate per the state formula, but since those, the, the number that we have, we, we've been given, provides that we need a budget that's over the, I'm sorry, revenue that's over the no new revenue, we need five votes in the affirmative in order to go forward with the budget that you just passed. So that, that's a requirement from the state, it's not a simple majority, so that'd be four, and this rate is over eleven percent lower than the existing rate, and it's been lowered through the debt service by that additional half cent, so that's reflected in here. This has absolutely zero to do with water and sewer rates, this is only on the property tax to fund the budget that you just adopted, passed on first reading.
Yeah, and that's, I just wanted to make sure we set the table that while it's saying tax rate increase, that's from the no new revenue rate, we're actually decreasing the property tax this year eight point three cents, or an eleven point one percent decrease in the property tax rate. So if you have an actual, if you have a homestead property, your home, and you get a max appraisal at ten percent, you're still going to see a dollar-for-dollar cut. And again, remember, Cam Carr talked about it, I got a twenty-three percent increase in my home this year. I know where it's going next year, but I don't know where all the calculation's going to go next year. So to say it's automatically going to do such and such, we don't know. But I know I'm maxed at ten percent. I'm still going to get a property tax cut. Last year, below the no new revenue rate, I paid more in property taxes. That's how I know that rate calculation is, is nothing more than a big calculation. But yet, it's, it's trumpeted out there for something other than what it is. So with that, open it up to questions, comments from council on the property tax rate, and remember, we have to have five votes because it's above the no new revenue, we have to have five votes to adopt it. With that, I'll open it up to comments. Member Carbone? I guess I'd have a, a question for the three nays on the budget. Are, are you going to approve a tax rate? Because we just passed a budget that's set on one tax rate, and so if we don't, what, where do we fall back? Darren?
Or Clay?
The no new revenue.
So yes, if, if the council does not adopt a tax rate, we will be forced to go back to the no new revenue rate and make the adjustments accordingly.
And just to amplify that, that would mean five million dollars less to the general fund than we, we have, so that means not only everything on the supplementals, but we'd have to go back in to find the five million dollars from existing operations.
To add, also that the TERS charge would decrease significantly on top of that as their length.
So that's true, we, we would have three million dollars less from that, so we're talking about eight, that, right? Eight million dollars that would have to come out of the existing budget, from the existing base budget.
So is that, is that from the ninety-nine million proposed right from last year?
One more time, just so.
Is that the, the rate from last year, the ninety-nine million rate, or do I have to go back to the calculation that we got from the state?
It, it would mean, so the budget that was adopted assumes revenue of thirty-six point seven from property taxes and thirteen million from the TERS, we would go back to twenty-five point six million in property taxes, and then ten million from the TERS, so that's where we get that, it's about twelve million dollars, what's that, right? It's, it's significant from what you have in the budget now.
Member Carbone, you, you asked a straightforward question, I'll give a straightforward answer. I haven't changed, I'm not supportive of the biggest budget in general fund expenses in the history of the city. I understand the needs, the wants, I hear that, but I'm just not going to get there.
I respect you for that, I was looking this way. I mean, a no vote here, just, it would not only, and defund some of the fire department, defund the police too, so.
I hesitate to vote no to the, um, vote no on this, but I think it would, being at the no new revenue rate would make the budget untenable, and it would have to cut things that we don't want to cut. But I still think there are some things that we can cut, and what Member Hernandez was saying makes sense to me. There are some things in the budget that I, I, so I said no, because I didn't, I thought that it was, you know, unnecessary, so I said no, it was hard to say, but I still did it. But I also think, I don't think the no new revenue rate, the flat no new revenue rate is, will work for us. So if we want to run the city the way we run it, and have the city services we have, and I mean, I'm sure residents are going to be upset with that, and, but that's just true. But I think what Member Hernandez said is something to, to consider.
So I guess the, I guess you're, you're good with, you know, our fire department working OT, so we don't have those four additional firefighters, and we're, you're good with scratching the six budget amendments from last year?
I'm good with not spending three hundred thousand dollars to look at the UDC.
Well, that, that's not ten million dollars.
Why don't you let her respectfully like?
Three hundred thousand.
What he's suggesting isn't, isn't ten million, to be clear. And what I'm, I, I, I never want to take away from police or fire, never.
Yeah, and, and to reiterate what I was suggesting also, we have enough in our fund balance over policy to cover that as well, but, and if we were to draw that down to the policy, it would take the rate from sixty-two point three-seven-six-five to sixty-one point two-one-five-one.
There, there are proposals out there.
We'd still be.
Taking away from the fire or the other items, and it were brought up literally in this meeting, and was posted in the agenda on eight-twenty-two.
I want to ask something, there was something on the slide that said that we hadn't made meant, hadn't met a consensus on the thirteen point one percent.
Moving away from it. There was no consensus to move away from it.
To move away from it. So we have, we have that rate increase, we do have a garbage and sewer rate increase as well that we keep forgetting to mention. So I.
Enterprise fund, but again, the point is.
So Member Cade, so Member Cade, in the, in the last agenda item, I now painfully waited for an amendment to be offered. Nobody would say anything. We voted against it, or we voted in favor of the budget, we have four that are going to vote down this tax rate, is going to move it back. You don't want to go to the no new revenue rate. You're saying what he's, you say what he's, what he's proposing is something that you would, 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 would get to. Again, if you want to make an, an amendment, you can make an amendment to that tax rate. We would have to go in and amend the budget, we can do that on the second reading, but instead of talking about it, I'm looking for action, I'm looking for an amendment. If you, if you want to offer an amendment of point six-one-two-five-one, whatever the number is there, now's the time to make that. We vote on a tax rate, and we amend the budget in the, in the next meeting.
If I could, Mayor, I'll, I'll provide that number, we've got this reading, we've got another reading coming up, and I would at least afford staff the time to address it in a memo between then. I think I would be, I would find that sufficient.
Fair enough.
That, yeah, I would, I would find that sufficient, I mean, I've put the number out there. I, I'm with Member Cade, I, I think the no new revenue rate is just, it's impossible. I would not want us to revert to that. I, I want our, you know, city to be able to operate, you know, somewhat effectively for our residents. But, but yeah, I, I mean, I could see moving forward with this, and, and would love to see some feedback from staff between now and the second reading.
Just to clarify, that was to cut the tax rate off of the general fund surplus?
Right.
Okay. I think they've addressed it before, but yeah, I think putting a memo, that'd be good.
Mayor, I think, just to dovetail off of the number Hernandez comments, you don't have to be all the way a hundred percent for the no new rate to be against this budget. And I think where I'm at is, this is the most expensive budget in the history of the city, there are things that we all, in different buckets, have had our qualms with, or issues with, or concerns with. I think Member Carbone just says it very succinctly, there's not a ton of consensus, there's two or three here, there's two or three there, there's three or four here, there's two or three there, but they're all over the board. But I think what is, what you are hearing consensus is that there are some folks that just don't want this budget, as it currently, and it's one-ten, highest number is. I want to give the staff the ability to go do their jobs, to do a great job, they provide a lot of volume when we give them the opportunity. I think going and doing this budget, it would be even worse to go do this at the second reading than it would the first. At least we have the backup of two weeks' time to go and, and, and take some heat. I just, I just want to reiterate, I am not for this one hundred and ten million dollar budget, the largest in the history of the city. That's what I'm not for. If we get somewhere right around ninety-nine, one oh two, one oh three, one oh four, it's better than one-ten. There's no world where one-ten is less than one-oh-five, there's not. So I, I just.
Since we voted on the budget, now we're talking about tax rate.
Agreed, but, but those two go together and they're married.
They do, but we've already approved the budget. So now we have to, how do we, how do we marry?
How do we negotiate the rate? And I agree, but.
That, that's all I'm trying to do, is how do we do this? And as I stated, if you guys want to offer an amendment at the point six-one-two-one-five number, get a second, we can vote on amendment, and if that's passed and approved, we can vote on that, and they can amend it at the next reading. And if that's passed and approved, we can vote on that and they can amend it at the next reading, the actual budget to match it. That's all I'm saying. It's a way to do that, and it doesn't have to be done tonight. It can be done on the second reading.
Which I'd like to say, and I guess to what Member Kamkar was thinking. This is, it's always going to be the most expensive budget in the city's history.
As long as we're growing, it's going to.
And, you know, I wanted, I guess also went to staff saying, you know, I think, I don't think that staff puts together rate models that say on the enterprise side with no empathy whatsoever for the residents. I think you're just doing your job. You're creating a model based on the numbers that are presented. I think it is our job to take that additional consideration and think about where we can have an impact on trying to shave things off. So I think that's kind of where we are. I don't, you know, I'm trying to find some middle ground here. But, but I think, Staff Sergeant, you've written it down. I don't know that we have to do the amendment tonight, but I mean, they can at least bring back, you know, what that would look like. And on the next reading, we can.
Darren, correct me if I'm wrong. If we vote on the .62375 tax rate, and we don't get five votes for that, it automatically reverts to no new revenue.
Correct.
So what they're suggesting, if we don't want to go to no new revenue, we offer an amendment at this number that you said, if we have the votes to do that, then the budget will get amended to make that happen at the next. Am I understanding that correct?
If it doesn't get five votes tonight, yes, the tax rate will be the no new revenue rate.
I guess.
Real quick, and so, which means in two weeks.
Right.
You'll see a budget to equal the no new revenue.
Yeah, and what I was saying is I would be comfortable voting on the point, the rate as it's presented, knowing that we could get information and then we could amend it on the second reading. So it's just doing the same thing, but just opposite. Yeah.
Okay. I heard that. Okay, I didn't hear it that way the first time. Sorry.
Sorry.
Wait, and so just, what are we?
Voting on the.
The rate as it is.
Rate as presented. As proposed.
We'll have a second reading.
We'll have a second reading. All this has a second reading.
Okay, all right.
Just going by what people are saying.
Yeah. That was right.
No, go ahead. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Anybody else have anything? We're voting on the rate as proposed, right? Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No.
The motion passes by the two.
All right. So I think we have, Clay, do you have some direction on that?
I'll, I'll try to get in writing ahead of time what Mr. Hernandez says because it seems to be the thing. As he talked about from those highlights and supplements, some specific things. But I still don't, I think I understand, but that would be taking off the table, the additional firefighter positions and some other things. So that's, I heard only the pay increases and the drainage.
No, this rate would just be a drawdown of the fund balance to policy. That's all it would be. And I think Tony had said, excuse me, Member Carbone had said, if we draw up a memo, you know, that's why I'm saying I would like to see in the interim. I support this tonight, looking for staff's direction.
It's fair and appreciate that. We'll talk in the meantime. I would say, and not to surprise anybody, we're talking then about using fund balance for recurring operating costs is what it sounds like.
Oh, so you've got time to.
So with that, so with that, we'll move to item number, we don't have a topic on the table to discuss. I was just trying to get clarification if they had, if they had idea where to move. Item number seven, Mr. Kamkar, would you present that, please?
Consideration possible action, first reading ordinance 1358-24.
We have a motion of second, staff report.
So this is the first reading of the non-development fees. This is include various user costs, and this does include the water and sewer rates as described in detail and all the budget materials, the rate model, et cetera, et cetera. So this includes that part of it. That's an add.
All right, questions, comments from council? Member Carbone?
And just to clarify, this scratched the bulk of the new.
Yes, sir, the bulk of them, just the three one-time costs. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is this scratch all the park fees?
I'm sorry, what do you mean by park fees? We do have park fees.
The new ones that were proposed.
So there was reductions for veterans, there were some other things.
I'm not asking about reductions. I'm asking the new fees implemented that the Parks Director talked about, I want to say it was two meetings ago.
I believe we had consensus direction to include the park fees in. So they, the park fees that were proposed that we discussed are in.
Who are the four members that provided consensus?
Council, we're here tonight, or in there, that's what you asked.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that those park fees that are new be zeroed out. They're not in the budget currently. This is not the time to be raising revenue in a recession.
Second on the amendment, any other questions, comments? You what?
I didn't say anything, thank you. Oh, I make a motion that all of the new park fees that were provided be zeroed out, that were implemented, I guess, two meetings ago.
Staff, can you tell us what we're talking about?
Yeah, so Carrie, can I pull up the material, what additions were?
Yeah, give me one sec to pull up the presentation from last time, please.
All right, so some of the fees that we were requesting to add, they were changes to our athletic field use fees. We're currently already charging fees for athletic field use, but we were recommending some changes to those based off of market standards. We were increasing, we were requesting to increase our lifeguard fee. As it currently stands right now, the rate that we charge people that are renting the auditorium, they're paying less than what we're paying our lifeguards. So this was a request to increase that fee. The next one is to remove a fee for a deposit for the Independence Park swimming pool. That pool no longer exists, and so we do not need a fee for a deposit for that. The next rate is for the recreation center and auditorium, member-only household fee. That fee already exists, but there was a typo in a previous budget addition, and so this is the correction of that. The next fee is a request to remove, the current fee ordinance says that there is a security fee. Security fees for police officers for any of our facility rentals are paid directly to the Police Officers Association, not to the city.
I guess we clarify the motion because these make sense, and I don't.
The motion was to remove any of the new additional fees that were presented for this year's budget.
And I believe the other fees were also the discount for PISD, Alvin ISD, as well as veterans for memberships to the recreation center and auditorium.
I don't believe there were any new fees on the parks. There was, there was a couple of changes and increase, one from 10 to 115, and then a couple.
Those increases, however you'd like to do, anything additional over what we were doing in this past fiscal year, I'd like to zero out. If we're giving discounts, let's give the discounts. I think that that's great. Veterans should have discounts, they'd like them, they've earned them. But anything new and over and above what we're currently doing, that's the motion is to zero those out.
So some of the additional fees that are new is a fee for dedicated onsite athletic maintenance staff. That's not currently a service that we have a fee for, and so we therefore we cannot provide that service to our rentals. We're asking to add a fee for the Miracle League field. This is a new venue that we have that is available for rental, and we need to assess a fee with that. And then we have our RSA competitive play fee. Right now, there's not a separate fee for RSAs that are utilizing the fields for competitive use. And based off of our policies, there should be a separate increase fee for the competitive play. The next one is for specialized field preparation. This is when tournament organizers are wanting us to set up fences or move bases or do an extensive amount of work to prepare the fields for their tournaments. And so we're proposing to charge a fee for that. There, we're requesting to add a fee for the new turf fields at the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch. Those did not exist before, and if we're going to be able to rent those out, we need a fee associated with that. Independence Park, we're requesting to add a fee for the custodial fee for cleaning the restrooms at the stage, the dressing rooms and restrooms there at the stage. Without that, we're not able to provide that level of service to the individuals that are renting the park. We're requesting, we get a lot of requests for rental of the Shadow Creek Ranch pavilion, or the pavilion at the sports complex at Shadow Creek Ranch. We're requesting to incorporate a fee so we can rent that facility out as well.
Member Hernandez had a question?
Let's have a question, just more of a comment. I started on the Parks Board before running for council, and these are kind of elective fees for service. I think these are directly coming from users that are putting wear into here, particularly with the RSAs. I mean, they use those fields and depending on the weather, you know, what type of teams are out there, how hard they're playing out there. These fees, to me at least, coming from the Parks Board and kind of seeing how all of this stuff is, you know, used by those specific teams, specific people, specific users, they're running facilities for whatever functions they have. I think it all makes sense. So I just wanted to add a little bit of color to that.
Carrie, I had a quick question. So obviously, some of this, like a park attendant to be there, right now, there's no fee we're asking for whoever rents the space to pay certain fees. So that type of an expense, who's absorbing that now? Obviously, staff's not working for free out there. So how's that being absorbed?
So like, for example, the lifeguard fee. Currently, we're charging $10 an hour for lifeguards to staff different swimming meets. Our cost for that is an average of $15 an hour. So the city's general fund is absorbing that difference. The same thing with our park maintenance staff. If they have to go out to help prepare the fields for an event, the city is just absorbing that cost without the associated fee.
Same thing on setup and those types of things. If we're not charging for those setups, then the general fund is absorbing that, correct?
That's correct.
As you said, it's kind of elective, it's a, it's a user fee. Quite frankly, over time, and I've asked for this, you know, it will be in this budget, but next year, on the, on the fire fees, you know, our department is going out and doing those inspections, and our general fund is paying for it. So every, every taxpayer is paying for those inspections to happen. So not that I want to see businesses' costs drive up, also want to make sure that our residents are paying for their services, not someone else's service. So I'd be interested to know how many of those different inspections on the fireside that we do currently on an annual basis. We should have a good record of that. And what would that revenue increase be? Be interesting to see what that would be over the course of a year, and what that could mean in rate reduction for everyone. So I said that early on, and be interesting to see how we, how we get there. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion on the table in our second. I'll wait. We have a motion of second to take any new or increased fees and revert back to the way it was before.
Correct, deductions withstanding. I just, here's my, my position, just to give it more nuance. There is a time and a place, and if people are using them, user fee is not necessarily unwarranted. There is a time and place, there's a season for everything. And we already have a budget that we were now passing that is fairly aggressive. Businesses are going to pay that. We're going to talk about water at some point, we're going to pay that. And it's just, it just seems like it's a lot at one time. There is a time and a place, and that's kind of been my position on that, so.
That's fair. I was trying to, I was trying to, well, I was trying to defer to his second. He's not here. There he is. I mean, the flip side to this is these fees collect the dollars that the city spends for that fee. So if this is approved, then we're paying more out of the general fund to supplement. Specific.
Agreed.
That'd be my no vote.
Okay, agreed, but also this budget isn't built necessarily to have those fees in place. It's literally a bumper. I'm not opposed to going and building in next year, but this is not.
But, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, we did take, they did take all the other, not the fees that they offered, like from the Fire Marshal's Office and stuff like that. They took all those fees out of there. I'm in full support, and it is, you're right, it is, it is not a great time for this. But when is a good time? You know, whether we agree to disagree or not on our budget, we have the largest budget or whatever. I personally believe the budget is warranted, and we can have that conversation. It looks like we're going to have that conversation over the next few weeks. But at the end of the day, we have usage fees. I think we just got some information regarding, you know, the update of our soccer fields. You know, we're going to have to spend a ton of money associated with that. So we go back to our buckets, right? We go back to these fees. These fees get put into these buckets associated with maintenance and update. I'm in disagreement with an auditorium and paying 70, you know, having people only pay 75%. I get it. I'm on the, I'm on the wrong side of that vote. I get that, and that, I'm fine with that. But at the end of the day, I believe that if you're going to use our facilities and we're going to provide them, we ought to just, we ought to pay to maintain them so that they're safe and our utilities and restrooms and things of that sort in good working order. That's, that's just my thought on it. And the fees that I see right here are warranted. You know, the access control inspection fee, the hot work, the spray booth, there's no secret to that. We voted on that a while back after they removed all the other ones. So I get it, I feel you, I sympathize with you. But at the end of the day, I feel like these particular fees are warranted.
Any other questions, comments? We're going to vote on the motion to amend as stated by Member Kamkar, seconded by Member Owens. Madam Secretary, we'll call for a vote on the motion to amend.
Member Kamkar?
Almost had a moment there. Almost had a moment, almost 40, I have to think what am I saying yes and no to. A motion to amend, I am supportive, yes.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Berry?
No.
Member Owens?
I guess I'll say no.
Member Coza?
No.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
No.
The motion fails 1 to 6.
I appreciate the second.
Yeah, so we're back to the regular motion as it was presented. Do you have something to add?
Yeah, just one more thing on that, just because we do have some people here tonight, on some of these park fees, facility usage fees, things like that. Just to keep in mind also, Member Kamkar, that a lot of the people that are paying these are not necessarily Pearland taxpayers, Pearland residents. So there's that as well. It's an opportunity to recover those costs and, you know, just wanted to add that as well that.
I agree.
With that, Madam Secretary, we're going to call for a vote on the regular motion.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
The motion passes next to one.
All right, back to Mayor Protim Carbone. Would you place number eight on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R 2022-207, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, staff report?
Please present to you mayor council recommendation for award of the guaranteed maximum price with Durotech. And this is for one of our capital projects, which would reposition existing fire station, old Fire Station 4, into our new public safety training that will be primarily used for our police academy, but also be purpose for other police and fire trainings. And then it also includes some renovations to the public safety building, reuse of the former tax office space, improvements to the canteen for emergency situations and other uses, and then some security provisions for the first floor, which would segregate the public and the private office spaces much, much better. So the project's been around, but we've gone through the process and got our partner, Durotech, here for the award and to the position where we can award. here for the award and to the position where we can award this, and this would set the stage then for moving forward on that work that I believe we'll be able to execute and be into that late summer next year. Nothing to add.
All right, questions, comments, concerns from council? Mayor Carbone? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Who was the firm that did the animal shelter?
So that's Duratec, construction.
Close some gaps here, water runs downhill.
Sure, so they're addressing the issues there, we're comfortable with where they're heading on addressing any of the issues there, and so they've been a good partner on multiple projects. And so despite the problems we've had there, they're addressing those, and we're comfortable moving forward with them on this project.
Any other questions, comments? I guess you expound on that if you want it to pass tonight?
So as far as what they're doing at the animal shelter?
Yeah, what happened? I mean, unless we're going to be in litigation.
No, I don't expect we'll be in litigation. You know, the detailed concrete work within the kennel area, it's detailed, it's, you know, got some minor, the grading is subtle to make the water all run in the right place. Their subcontractor that did that work did inadequate work there, and so as of this week, we'll start the process. The kennels have already been removed, they're going to remove the concrete work in there, the engineers preparing revised drawings for them to ensure that it's done properly, and they'll move forward with that and then put it back together. When was this supposed to open? The animal shelter? I believe it was right around the end of August. Is that true? Because it's now going to be in November now, right? I saw a couple emails.
Well, with supply chain stuff, it's been delayed, but once they got through the supply chain, yeah, it was supposed to open in late July or early August or somewhere in there, and then move in, and then they found the problem. Right.
Man, I don't know where Member Carbone stands, he hasn't enunciated that, but. I had the same conversation with our project staff today, and they assured me the work is moving forward to correct all those things, and that the quality of the work, just outside of that, they're comfortable with moving forward. I appreciate that there's been discussions around it, but here's the thing, that was a contentious item when it came to the ballot, and it was budgeted at 12 million, I ratcheted it down to nine, there's a lot of back and forth, a lot of hits we took, and now it doesn't even open on time, and it's over something as stupid as the grading where the urine rolls down doesn't grade correctly. I mean, that's like a, that's a relatively straightforward, it's not a pipe deep, deep in the ground, it's not surface water plant, it's not even, you know, some Chinese part that is embargoed because it's got to be made in America. It's something silly, is we couldn't get the surveying right and get water to roll downhill. It doesn't sound a good idea to bring the same guy back on another project. And this is a rehab item, right? Like this facility isn't a new facility, we're having to go rehab an existing facility, right? That's correct. Okay, well, for the folks who aren't in construction, it's a hell of a lot easier to start over or scrape or start new construction than it is to build something or rehab or fix. If they can't get something this simple right, I just loathe the idea that like we put them on something that is existing, that is probably old, probably not like built in 1992 or 2002. They just, they've, they've made their bed, they've got to sleep in it, and I don't think I'm going to support that.
Real quick, is there somebody from Duratec here?
Good evening, my name is Sudesh Khankotkar, I am Executive Vice President of Duratec, and I handle pre-construction services.
Should we wait on this, till we are assured building next door is done?
Not doing that.
And before I say that, your guaranteed maximum price is good for how long?
I think the GMP price is guaranteed until tomorrow, and that's because.
Make that about February 15th, and we'll wait until the other is completely done, and then maybe we'll have a conversation about moving forward with this. We'll just negotiate it right now. Make your guaranteed maximum price on this building good, we can approve it all the way up until February, we'll wait until you get the other correct, then we'll consider this back on the table. And you have 30 seconds to make the okay.
Well, I don't think I can guarantee that, sir, because.
Y'all want to postpone this?
Oh, let's vote.
You want to vote? All right.
No.
Anybody else have a question on this?
So if I, I could just jump in, Duratec also built the new Fire Station Four, and I believe they were on Fire Station Eight as well, Fire Station Eight as well. So we've had a long track record with them prior to, you know, as well as despite the issues we've had as of late.
And I get.
Just wanted to make sure everyone understood we've had a longer term relationship.
And I get that, it's just not, we don't have dialogue from the floor, and I'm sorry, they're part of the bid process here. I get that, but I also understand the optics of this. I get, I mean, I wasn't a happy camper about $12 million on the ballot for an animal building, and then, you're right, we can't even get it open, and it's not supply chain as a result. And sometimes, and I'm not saying anybody should be blackballed, I don't believe in that, but I do believe in timeouts. I believe strongly in timeout, and this is a timeout provision. I'm giving you the opportunity for a timeout.
Well, sincerely, I do not know the details of the issues, but I've heard about the issues that are being corrected, and not knowing fully what took place, I can assure you that I can get into the.
Well, since your guaranteed maximum price is good until tomorrow, we're not going to get to those details. So with that, any other questions, comments?
So I guess, I guess we don't have the right people here to answer the questions regarding that project, but how many projects have we done with Duratec over the years? Rough estimate, four, five, 10?
Jameson, are there others besides eight, Fire Stations Eight, Four, and so this will be the fourth building?
And when we discovered the issue, did it take a while for them to, or for anybody to come up with a move forward scenario on fixing whatever issues those are, and who's taking the responsibility for that project, that issue?
So they were out shooting grades almost immediately, within a couple of days. They were removing the kennels within, I believe, about a week, and, you know, at this point, they've taken responsibility for that, they have not approached us or said anything to us about any of this, you know. Our approach has been, this was not the mistake of the cities or the design, and it will not cost the city any additional money. It will take a little bit of time to correct.
And is that the GC, or is that the sub paying for that?
I, you know, what is going on between the GC and the sub as far as who's handling the cost of that, I don't know that.
Not the city.
Not the city.
It's definitely not the city, absolutely, given our contract. Okay, I was just trying to figure out whether or not we had to worry about an installment sub or somebody pushing back on whether or not they were pointing fingers at each other to determine who was actually at fault there or whatnot, so.
We haven't seen any pushback presented to us.
Wasn't anticipated timeline on that?
November, mid-November.
So three months, three months delay after we had to move our animals out, is there any other soft costs associated with reimbursement for having to move our animals out of that facility and return them?
We haven't had that discussion with them.
Is that something we have on the table with them?
We can't have that on the table with them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't want to mess up your timeout, but you just also keep in mind, you know, we've got teed up future police academies, use of the space, et cetera, et cetera, so a longer timeout, you know, wouldn't wreck us, but we don't have the space now, but it would impact some of those things I talked.
I get that, and I think probably the prudent thing to do, and I would entertain a postponement, and that is postpone until we have the right people at the podium that can answer those questions. I mean, bottom line is, you can't answer the question, I'm not going to ask you to answer that question and get fired, you can't do that. I get it, but at the same time, you guys have to know, two buildings over, we have a problem, we know about it, that question's going to come up. You had to anticipate that, and if you didn't, I'm sorry, you need to think about going in front of council more often.
I understand your concerns, and I'm going to direct it to the right people and get it addressed.
Well, and so.
But I would like to address your question on the GMP, why it's, why the deadline is tomorrow. The bids, subcontractor bids, were taken almost a month and a half back. In the market conditions today, the subcontractors do not hold their prices for more than 14 days, but we have agreed and negotiated with the subcontractors to hold the numbers till tomorrow. There are long lead items like generators and some mechanical equipment that need to be released, and if you do not get that released, those are, that will not make the project completed in time. So I will get to the bottom of the issues that you are having with animal control shelter. We want a good relationship with the City of Pearland, we have done numerous projects with the City of Pearland, and we're going to take care of this problem.
Mayor, if I could, just one last thing, not trying to pressure, just more information, this is a C Mar, and so we've been contracted, we're in with them, this is the, now that we've gone through that process, establishing that guaranteed max price, and so, I know you know that, but just for everybody, it's not like we're halfway across the river.
I guess, so given that, let's do a vote first, see where we go. You have a question? So with that, let's just put a vote on the table. Madam Secretary, let's call for the vote.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
No.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
No.
The motion fails.
Three to four.
Three of four.
Three to four to nine. So I guess we go back to the drawing board, figure out what we do. What I, my suggestion is, we keep engaged with the C Mar, we get responsible people here for all of that, and we have that discussion, and I would pressure your subs to keep their price.
Thank you, I will do that.
All right, with that, we'll move to matters removed from consent agenda, there were none, other business, there were none, moving to next item, item 14, Mayor Council issues for City Council. This is a council discussion and direction, request of Hilton Garden Inn, HGI, to enter into an extended hotel occupancy tax, hot abatement agreement. I'll start off real quick, it would not be an extended agreement, it would actually be a new agreement because the old agreement has expired, so there is no agreement in place today. With that, I'm going to turn it to Member Carbone and Member Kamkar, I think y'all asked for this to be on the agenda, and we'll go from there. First, we did have one speaker. Cash, will you go to the podium, give us your name and address? And there should be a timer for three minutes.
Mayor Carbone, how many minutes, three minutes?
Three.
I'm going to be speaking on behalf of some of the hoteliers that are over here, so I might need a little bit more time, but I will try and do as quick as I can.
I think we're going to set it at five minutes. Welcome. Thanks.
My name's Cash Piguanji, address 12919 Southern Ridge Drive, Pearland resident, and also the hotel owner for the La Quinta, as well as the Candlewood Suites. Today, I am going to be speaking on behalf of some of the hotel owners over here in regards to a possible discussion for this new agreement. It is our understanding that the previous agreement has lapsed, so in that case, it's already, we're talking about an amount that's already been disqualified. The second point that kind of is a little bit more intriguing to us is how the funds have been dispersed and awarded already. One of our major issues is that, the understanding is that the initial funds for the meeting space, the conference space, whatever you'd like to call it, was 11,000 square feet. The actual amount of square foot that has been constructed for meeting area in that hotel is around 5,000, listed even on their official website. We're talking about almost $2 million of public funds that have been awarded over a period of time, which I think a lot of people would agree with me right now, would very much be needed for the existing hotels in Pearland, not just the Hilton Garden Inn. So I don't think we entirely believe that there's been a fair and equitable recovery for those funds. I don't think it would be prudent for the city to award any excess funds that have not been collected under the previous agreement, but more importantly, I think, how the city had arrived to execute those funds, disperse those funds to the Hilton Garden Inn, not taking into consideration the constraints of the contract, especially for the total amount of conference space that was to be provided. Again, my biggest issue, and the biggest issue for all the hotel owners over here, is we don't see a direct economic impact that has helped the city or helped any of us. So I think furthermore, dispersment of these funds or any other funds should probably be allocated to something that's going to alleviate our position going into a very difficult fiscal year for all the individual hotels, as well as the CVB and other departments that work closely with us. We, I think we really do need the city's support in this, and really have a look at this item in particular, and just kind of really think about what we're trying to do over here.
Thank you for that. Now we'll move on to. Member Carbone? Thank you, Mayor. No, I saw the request come through, I thought it was good to at least have a discussion to see. When I first saw it come across, I thought it was an extension of the original agreement, but I guess a good point was brought up, and I was looking through the agreement, I don't see where it's tied to the 12,000 square foot, but maybe if somebody was around back, what, 2007? It wasn't, and it changed and morphed, the agreement was amended a couple of times. The original agreement, and I'm going purely by memory, I don't have it up in front of me, but I think the original amendment, or the original agreement was for about 10 years, 1.8 million, and then they did have some problems right at the beginning of opening, that's when Ike hit and some other stuff, which delayed some openings, and then all of a sudden, you know, they, in fact, they had to do a lot of, fix a lot of damage right before opening to almost go back under and reconstruct. So it was amended, and then they get ultimately ended up being, helped me during 12-year, 2.2 million, something like that, so it got increased.
We put a million in in the beginning.
Yeah, there was some, there was some additional, you know, obviously, costs were going up and those types of things, and so that was what it was. And to be real clear, the agreement says up to 2.2, it doesn't say 2.2.
It wasn't a guarantee.
Up to 2.2. And so I made it clear to the Hilton Garden Inn folks about a year ago, I met with them, they called and said, this is coming up, I don't think we're going to get to our 2.2, and made it clear that I can't speak for everybody on the council. I think some of their arguments, they can, they can make some good arguments about Shadow Creek Parkway going under construction, 288 going under construction, obviously the pandemic and those types of things that all kind of came through the way, but I made it abundantly clear, I said, if you want an extension, you probably ought to let us know March or April, don't wait until it's expired. Once it's expired, I don't think you have any leverage to do anything. And of course, they didn't, they didn't contact us until after it expired. And so for the public's edification, I think all that's. it expired. And so for the public's application, I think all that's left on the 2.2 is about $50,000. Darren, is that correct? All that's left is about 50 grand?
Approximately 50,000 is, was not, is what was not recovered, but it did run its full term.
And so we've made all of our payments. We've, I, I guess we have made all of our payments. I think all of the, the lagging time, we probably are through that. Is that correct?
There's actually going to be one payment, and I'll let Tracy explain that.
We will have an additional payout after the October 31st collection for the nine days of activity in July.
Okay. I couldn't remember if we were there, and I knew we were closed. Will that close the gap to roughly that 50,000?
No, it's going to be based on a prorated amount for the nine days, depending on what the Hilton Garden Inn remits for their...
But we'll still be just shy 50, about 50,000 shy of the 2.2 million?
Okay.
Yes.
Questions, comments? Member Camcar?
So the... Darren, can you make sure I'm seeing the ball clearly? So they had an agreement, like 15 years, more than that. And they got up to 2.1, the number was up to 2.2, and the delta, the 50,000 plus or minus is what we're talking about, is the delta between what was paid through the last agreement and the up to 2.2. Correct. And, and just to be clear, it says, we would pay them 71% of those taxes abated for 13 years from the date of issuance of their CO. But in no event shall the, shall they be reimbursed in excess of 2.2 million dollars. So we reimburse the 71% for 13 years. And they almost got up to 2.2, but they did not... Under that calculation of the 71%. Correct. Can the applicant go back to the, I have one question, and I'm, I apologize. I know he's not an applicant, but what is the...
One of the, yeah, one of the hoteliers.
So, yeah, one of the representatives, yeah. I apologize. Question, you, roughly speaking, how much did it cost to build that Hilton Garden Inn that's on Shadow Creek Parkway? Roughly speaking.
He's not the owner of the Hilton Garden Inn.
I'm not, I'm not...
Oh, he's not the guy?
No.
Yeah. The owner, the owner is here.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. How much did that cost? I guess the thing stands. Is it more than 2.2 million? Okay. All right. Well, I, I guess my perspective, I don't know, I, Member and I, we, we heard about this on email, we didn't, we haven't talked about this, is if they've done their bit, and they went through ICAT, and they went through all this others, and we say, come, come to Pearland, come to the tournament, and they need to have a place to stay, like they did their bit. They built it, they run it, they pay for city water. Thank you. You're going to get to pay more. Congratulations. You pay property taxes, you're going to get to pay more. Thank you. But I think the city needs to be known as a place that like if you, you put your word, and you do your bit, we have to do our bit. And if we have an agreement that says they're going to go do up to 2.2, and the calculation validates up to that, and we're one month shy, I think, I think that gentleman would go and tell other people, the City of Pearland does what it says it's going to do. I think that is positive, it's creative, he's employing people, he's a valued member of the community, the business community. And so that was kind of my thing. I don't know about going beyond, I really don't. I know that we remitted dollars from the CVB during Harvey to assist their hot tax dollars back to them. We didn't have to do that, but that felt like the right thing to do at the time. I was happy to vote on that, and that was a good thing. I feel like the right thing here, get up to the 2.2, as long as it's not stretched out five years or five months, and it's, it's quickly done with. And let's, let's at least be known as people who keep our word. I feel like that is, you know, it's their money. You know what I mean? I'd just like to clarify, the implication is that we're not keeping our words, and I just want to clarify. No, no, I'm not trying to... That's, that's what's been implied. And I just want to clarify that the city did pay 71% for 13 years.
Right. And it wasn't guaranteed.
I don't, I, I apologize if I'm inferring that we don't keep our words. I just, if we go and we, we set this goal, and we're only $50,000 shy, it feels like to me the right thing to do. I'm one person of seven. I appreciate the clarification, but I feel like they're running, they're buying water, they're paying taxes, they're employing people, and they're helping the city hit its goals. Hotel doors are part of that. I feel like that seems like the right thing to do. And Lord knows, the CVB has the money. So, you know, it was like $6 million. So, but yeah, that's my only points.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, Tracy, was the 41,000 in addition to or in lieu of?
The 41,000 that we paid out during the recovery grant program was in addition to...
And are we using that for the overall calculation that's presented here?
No, it was not part of the overall calculation.
Okay. So that's not, we're not using that to drive this $50,000 gap? Okay. That, I mean, that was really my only concern, Mayor, was if, if they were including 41,000, everyone, you know, got those dollars, so I wouldn't want to count that. But I mean, if that's the case, I think we've kept our word on...
Any other questions, comments, you guys? Anything else? Got it? All right.
This, this is really not a, a vote, but I don't, I don't think there was consensus to do anything. Darren, did you hear a consensus to draw up a new agreement?
I have not.
Yeah. I, I think we just heard one, and, yeah, I, I agree. I think this, I think the city did what it was supposed to do. In, in my own deal, sometimes you, you hope for the best, you hope it's going to be there, and if you're a little bit shy, that's just part of the business plan, and you move on. The city's done its, its, its part. They did their part. They, they built a conference center. It might not have been what is originally talked about. There's been lots of meetings there. I've been to a ton of lunches there over time. So, yeah, I mean, it's, and it's a space that gets used, it gets used a lot. We appreciate that. But I can't see entering into a new agreement over 50 grand at this, at this hour. So with that, we'll move to adjournment, and we'll adjourn at 10 o'clock.